Our folks, please silence your cell phones and devices. We're about ready to start. So I have 601. 601, I call this meeting inside my city council order. Please rise for the place.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored and righteous as fire, honored and righteous as CD, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. Please be seated. Item two is the invocation, and that is our friend Pastor Michael Orr. Welcome, sir.
Let's pray together. Righteous and loving heavenly Father, we're so very grateful for all that you do for us, for creating us and creating this beautiful world you've given us, for taking care of us and providing for our needs. Father, we have been blessed as a community with prosperity, with so many people moving in and new businesses, and we're grateful for all of the economy and the success that we've had over the past several years. We pray, Lord, that as we prosper, that we would look out for each other and for those who are in need. We pray as we make decisions that will change our community and the shape of our community as we add restaurants and businesses and other places. And we have so many different projects going on and decisions to be made. I pray that you would be with each of our city council members and give them peace and give them a clear mind to be able to make all of these decisions, to use their wisdom and their understanding, to be able to make the very best decisions for our community. Please bless them and their families and keep them healthy, keep them safe. Thank you for their dedication to our community, and I pray that you would watch over them and guide them in all that they do. We thank you for all of our first responders, for the firemen who were able to do such a brave thing in saving someone, Father, and I pray a blessing on all of them who labor so hard to keep us safe, for policemen and others, emergency responders that are there at our darkest times. We pray that you would be with them and keep them safe and healthy. Continue to be with our schools and teachers and all of those who are continuing to learn and to grow, and I pray for a safe environment for all of our kids. Please keep us from evil and from harm and keep our schools and our teachers and our staff and our children safe. Father, be with us as we think about those less fortunate than us. Bless the poor among us and in this community who suffer and struggle. I thank you for organizations like Community Link that reach out to them and help them, and I pray a blessing on them. And on all of those who look out for those who are in need, I pray that you would be with us as a community in sharing and loving and caring for those who might be hurting, might be struggling. Thank you so much, Father, for this wonderful community. Thank you for your gift of love. Thank you for your blessing. Thank you especially for your son, Jesus, and in his holy name I pray. Amen.
Thank you, sir.
Item three is audience participation. Please, if there's an item you wish to speak, please see the city secretary and fill out a form. Looks like this. If it's a public hearing item, you do not need to fill out a form. I will call for folks to address the council at a time during that discussion. So you do not need to do that for the public hearing items, of which there are several this evening. Item number four is the consent agenda. A is action regarding minutes of February 7th. B is action regarding order of bid replacement for 25 ton HVAC. C is action regarding order of bid for aquatic center repairs. D is action regarding rejection of all bids for final mowing. E is action rejection of all bids for finished mowing grounds and maintenance. F is amendment regarding, action regarding amendment of pass order number one with COMFIM and SOTC by utility assessment coordination services for FM 156 at industrial intersection project. And G is action regarding acceptance of right-of-way dedication agreement to accept donation right-of-way temporary construction license for the FM 156 at industrial intersection process project. Any questions, comments? If I don't entertain a motion for consent agenda.
Mayor, I forgot to ask. Would you please pull item four C, please?
Okay.
For what?
C. C is in charge.
Charlie. Who's not here.
I'm looking for, excuse me, a motion for A, B, D, E, F, and G.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda items A, B, D, E, F, and G, please.
Go second. Mayor's second. Please cast your vote.
Under your word.
Most of the passes. As I said before, we do have a call on this evening. Councilmember Tucker is in a vote. Item C, action regarding award of bids for aquatic center repairs and renovations. For that, Keith Manhart, Director of Community Services.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is, this item, we originally had intended to bring to you back in January. We went out for quotes for, we had a number of repairs needed to be taken care of. None of them had to do with the freeze or any damage. It's just maintenance-type repairs. The facility was built in 2007. It's 16 years old, or it will be, coming this summer. We went out for, we got three quotes. They, each one were over 50,000, which triggered that we needed to go out for bid. So we went out for bid, and this is the result of those bids. It did slow down the process about two months, but we did what we had to do. We're recommending going with the lower bid, which in your council packet, you can see all the items that needed to be repaired. Wear fencing does a lot of work for the city. We've worked with them before, and the bid was 51,468.
Council questions for Keith?
Yeah. I know that the difference between these two bids is pretty extensive. Do we, are we familiar with the company that won this bid? Have we worked with them before?
We've worked, they did, we've worked with them in a lot of different areas. Some things that are listed here for the aquatic center really don't have anything to do with, you know, pumps and things like that. It's, there's a lot of, you know, wall work and flooring and surface work, things like that. They, you know, they've done a lot of work with them. My department has, Public Works has worked with them quite a bit. Most recently, they did a lot of the work, or most of the work, at the community center, doing the renovation of the community center. So we've worked with them quite a bit. The sign, even the sign out front, the monument sign out front of the community center, they did the rock work on that, too. So, very comfortable working with them.
Very good. Thank you.
Any other questions on item C? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that we approve item C, four C, as is written.
I'll second.
Go second. Please cast your votes.
Is that the old one?
It was my turn, so hold on just a second.
Most of the pass think Keith. There we go. Item number five. That's a good one. Recognition of firefighters for performing lifesaving measures that result in patients' full recovery. For that, Assistant Fire Chief Scott Graber. Welcome, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So I'm honored here tonight to recognize our fire department personnel. I'd also like to add by saying this is why starting CPR immediately and having access to AEDs are a must and contribute to saving lives every day. This was a team effort from the beginning by doing bystander CPR, the Tarrant County Sheriff's Deputy having his AED in his patrol unit. He used his AED for fire department Eagle Mountain ambulance, and then transporting the patient to Medical City Alliance. Also give a shout out to our counterparts, our PD, because there's numerous times that we arrive on scene and their personnel also doing CPR on victims. With that being said, I'd like to bring up Dean Miller with Medical City Alliance, and they've got a team here today.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. First, I'd like to thank you guys for allowing me this opportunity to recognize the heroic actions of four of our Saginaw's finest fire responders. My name is Dean Miller. I'm the chief nursing officer at Medical City Alliance. I have also oversight of our freestanding ER here at Saginaw and our newest one in Hasslet. We're here this evening to celebrate the heroic actions of four first responders here with us today. Would Lieutenant Austin Pittman, Engineer Brian Wall, and firefighter Tanner Harris, and Dale Alderite please join me to my left and right. Just last month, on January 5th, a call came in around 2:30 this afternoon from a woman who found her boyfriend lying unresponsive on the floor of his garage. The patient's girlfriend called 911 and immediately began CPR. When Saginaw Fire arrived on scene, they found that the girlfriend was still administering CPR. Saginaw first responders began administering lifesaving assistance until medics from Eagle Mountain EMS arrived. Fort Worth Fire Department and Tarrant County Sheriff's arrived on scene shortly thereafter. The patient was placed on a Lucas compression device, and a pulse was revealed atrial fibrillation. A fourth shock was delivered by the medics, and CPR resumed. The next pulse check revealed a strong return pulse, so the patient was ready for transport to Medical City Alliance. The patient arrived at Medical City Alliance, was immediately intimated. Trauma evaluation revealed third-degree burns on the patient's hand and head. The Medical City Plano Burn Center was contacted for patient transfer. PHI air transport was dispatched to Medical City Alliance for transport. Upon arrival to Medical City at Plano, and in the days to follow, the patient was treated for burns on his hands and his face. The patient was discharged and is now at home recovering, thanks to the quick-thinking action of these first responders and other first responders assisting that afternoon. In recognition of their actions, Medical City Alliance is proud to present Lieutenant Austin Pittman, Engineer Brian Wall, and firefighters Tanner Harris and Dale Alderite, the first responders' challenge coin, reserved specifically for first responders who quickly think and actually save the lives of the patients that we treat, that they treated. Congratulations to you, gentlemen. You are a great example of why we do this, the challenge coin presentation, and because of your quick thinking, this patient is back home with their family and their friends, and it has to do with y'all's quick response and y'all's expertise. So thank you.
You want to do a couple pictures, though?
Council stand up, just go up here. If you got here, Saginaw in the background. Yeah, man.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know you were good. Sorry. (laughter) Ready? Got the smile. Big smile. One, two, three. Got the sign and everything. They go.
Thank you, guys.
Oh, sure. Okay. One, two, three. Say, but this side. I forgot me. I think I'm gonna be fired. One, two, three. Okay, thank you, guys.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you, guys. Great work. We're gonna do a quick audible, so item number 15, we're gonna move that up to right now. I believe that is Fritz. Go up for Fritz.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening. I've been here before. I am Brent's law partner, Fitz Quast. He asked me to come over this evening and give you all a little summary about, you know, it's late February, election season is just around. Hello?
It's not on.
Is there a button I need to push? Can y'all hear me now?
We can hear you, but I don't know that they can hear you out there in Wonderland. There you go.
Seems to be on. Right. So, election season is just around the corner, so usually this time of year I get bombarded with lots of questions about elections and signage and where it's permissible to place signs for city council members and those running for other public offices. So, you know, it's a very busy season for me. I'm gonna try to go through these really quick. If you have any questions, please feel free to interrupt. So, I'm going to try to limit this to just telling you what the rules are. I'm gonna stay away with trying to explain the esoteric First Amendment basis for all these things, unless you ask me specific questions. So, first of all, first, good news. In the city of Saginaw, you know, most cities have regulations in their zoning ordinance concerning signs, and the city of Saginaw is not an exception. But, the rules concerning political signs are pretty straightforward, because, you know, the general rule is that temporary signs are generally prohibited. But there is a huge exception that essentially says that any sign that announces a campaign, and there are some other categories to that regulation, are not subject to the sign regulations in the zoning ordinance. So when it comes to zoning, there is no issue with the placement of temporary, or, I'm sorry, political or campaign signs. Another major rule that is in the city's ordinances is concerning city parks. There's a provision, it's 5867, that essentially says that all advertising signs, and it is my interpretation that advertising means, it can mean commercial advertising, it can mean announcing anything, that cannot be erected in a city park. So, right now, we know you cannot erect political signs in city parks in the city of Saginaw. Next, we move on to considerations under state law. So, essentially, in the state of Texas, if you have the permission of a private property owner where you're gonna place the sign, you can put the sign there anywhere in the state, so long as it meets certain size limitations. I believe it's 36 square feet, eight feet in height. You can't be illuminated and can't have moving parts. As long as you meet those requirements and you have the property owner's consent, you can erect political signs on any private property in the state of Texas. And of course, everyone is aware of the election code prohibition on polling places and early voting locations. Interesses that voters use, signs cannot be placed within 100 feet of the door. And in the Texas Transportation Code, there are a couple of, the general rule is if it's a state highway or federal right-of-way, political signs are not permitted. Another chapter in the Transportation Code essentially says that cities can allow them in city rights-of-way, but there has to be a specific ordinance allowing it. There is no such ordinance in the city of Saginaw, so, so, rights-of-way, erection of political signs are not, I'm sorry, erection of unattended political signs is not, is not allowed.
What's a public right-of-way?
Usually it's, where the streets are. I think you can include any public easements or alleyways or drainage easements of that nature, yes. Yeah. I think that's a, others are limited purpose, I'm sorry.
What about private easements?
As long as you have the permission of the underlying fee owner and maybe the holder of the easement, I think you can, you can erect it on that private property. All right. When we talk about coming onto city property and allowing political signs, perhaps distributing flyers, there's some interesting rules that come into play. There's provision in the Texas Election Code, which of course, as y'all are probably very well aware, public officials cannot authorize the spending of public funds on political advertising. Now, you think that's a very simple rule, but in application, it can have a lot of different, different meanings. For example, you come in, you sit down at City Hall, you use a printer to print out political materials, you use city paper, you use city employees' time, and there is even an argument that if you are doing anything on city property as a public official, that could be using public funds for political advertising. Now, that's important, because violation of that rule, I don't enforce that rule. The district attorney doesn't enforce that rule. The Texas Ethics Commission does, and anybody can file a complaint. So, you know, it's always my advice to steer well clear of political advertising So oftentimes, people, I get questions about government regulation. Can we prohibit campaign activity on city property? And the general answer to that question is absolutely, because the city has an interest in maintaining an appearance of impropriety, especially when it comes to local elections.
So, back up your minutes. So, two things here. So, the first one, ethics advisory option 550, flyers in employee-only areas. So, is that stating, do I interpret that as stating, there shall be no flyers on any, say, Saginaw city property?
So, what that ethics advisory opinion specifically addresses is, you know, when you go back into the areas of City Hall where employees are found, that clearly would-
Let's use it back here in the parking lot, the little grass areas. Can I put a sign if I so chose to run, or can I not?
I would say, I'm sorry, could you be very specific? Where's the location again?
Right behind City Hall here.
Right.
Where we park, there's those little grass, you know, that you mow, those mediums. Can I put a sign there?
I would say no.
Okay.
Because it gives the, gives the appearance of impropriety, and, you know, some citizen driving by might look at that and think, well, he's getting to place a sign there because he's a current incumbent member on City Council, and cities most time want to avoid that. So, another big loophole in state law, not loophole, but back in 2011, I handled a case for the city of Watauga. So, used to the law was, yeah, you can ban temporary signs on public property, all of them, right? So, this gentleman was out putting political signs at a community senator that was at Election Day polling place, and the cops said, "You can't do that." The guy just picked up the sign and held it. Is that a sign? Federal court eventually decided, no, I have a rule, okay? And that is, if it has legs, it's not a sign. So, we had to settle with that gentleman, and in response, the legislature in 2013 amended the election code to specifically provide that if you're at a, if it's a public building that is being used as either a Election Day polling location or an early voting location, you have to allow electioneering outside that 100-foot ring around the entrance. And electioneering specifically includes handing out flyers and posting signs. There is a provision in that law, actually, there's two versions of the law. One applies to Election Day, one applies to early voting, that essentially says that the government still has the right to step in and say, you know, we can impose reasonable regulations on signs at public buildings on Election Day or early voting.
So, let me ask. Sorry. Take your time. So, I'm allowed to electioneer, or any, any person is allowed to electioneer?
Absolutely.
Okay. And it's anytime during, it's even early voting. So, so I could show up here, go out here to this open space out here, and I could have a rally, and I don't have to get a special permit or anything? That's perfectly legal?
I believe this building is an early voting location. It was in November. Is it, okay?
Well, I just use this as an example. I'm just, any, any, so, the interesting thing is it doesn't, it doesn't give me how far away before I no longer am allowed to, so.
So.
So, what if I was doing a polling station here, but say I did it over at the library, which is next door?
Is the library a early voting location or a polling place?
No, this place is.
Okay.
But it's right next door, and maybe, maybe there's not a good place to have it, but it's still a public place.
So, the way, the way I interpret the law is it has to be on the same premises. So, I don't, I'm not prepared to answer the question about whether-
That answers that. That's good. Got it.
So, the government, the state law leaves open that local governments can essentially impose reasonable regulations for political signs, even at early voting locations or polling places. So, you know, I've advised that, you know, you can limit the number of exact signs that be placed, you can do distance regulations, you can put them in a specific area. This is something the city of McKinney did, and I believe this was several years ago. So, the 100-foot ring is in red, and the city imposed a regulation that you can only put political signs in the green square, green rectangle. And I will leave it to you to decide whether that's reasonable or not. So, essentially, to summarize very quickly, city parks, no. There's a local regulation that says you can't do that. In rights-of-way, no. There's no specific city ordinance that allows it. In city right-of-way, on city property, I would say no unless there's a specific regulation allowing it. We want to avoid the appearance of impropriety. And also, there's some potential election code violation, I'm sorry.
So, you are allowed on city property, though, you got that stipulation, if it's a polling place during polling hours.
Right.
Within the designated, I don't think we have a designated area, but if we had a designated area. So, what, what you said is, whatever this area is here, say if there's a polling area, as we defined it as this piece of property, then there would allow to be electioneering.
That is correct. I'm unaware, and I could not find any regulations that apply to the city of Saginaw that limit where you can put campaign signs on city public property. Now, that raises a good question, because I know, I, I used to live up at Bo Club Road. I used to vote over at the School District Administration Building. So, it's my advice, if you're wanting to post campaign signs there, you- So, it's my advice, if you're wanting to post campaign signs there, you need to follow whatever their rules are. So, if it's a, if it's a county property, you need to ask them what their rules are, they may have regulations about where signs can go.
So, what, sorry, I'm going through this, because these are things that's come up. What if you have, say, a park, and I rent a pavilion? Am I allowed to rent a pavilion and say have a thing? Because then, it's not costing the city any money, they're actually making money.
I am not prepared to answer that, you've stumped the lawyer, congratulations.
So, can you take, can you write that down?
But I can look it up, I can look it up and think about it, so.
Can you write it down?
I mean, sort of in the last, this last year's election, we had a candidate hold a rally out here without our knowledge, and we're going to rally in front of, it was like right out there, right? They did not ask for our permission, and just, it was a statewide candidate, just had the rally. What, what can we do about that? Because nobody asked for our permission, they just did it.
Well, I, I looked at that issue, and without knowing more about the rally, or what permits were, and where exactly it happened, I can't, I can't really answer the question. So.
Because we weren't consulted on that ahead of time, right? That was the thing.
They just did it.
Announced it on their media, social media, and people showed up, and we were sort of scratching our heads, yeah, so.
So, what did we do? How did we respond to that? Did we ask them to leave?
I think we did, what we did, we didn't want to-
They were outside of-
Yeah.
So, and we were a polling place, so, for Election Day, and, so, we didn't leave.
But they did tell them they had to take the signs away from the polling area.
People, if they were at the rally and handing them out, and just-
I looked, I looked it up when it happened, and there is a stipulation, you have to be so far away, and then if you have any type of public address system, you have to be even further away, because there's specific distances.
I, I am familiar with, with that, those provisions in the election code, however, I don't, I mean, I think it, it depends on whether you can actually hear it audibly, where the voting is actually taking place, and that could be a Class C misdemeanor, yeah. Any other questions?
I have one, please.
I'd be very interested in the one, because to me, I, unless it negatively impacts the city, or this, or somehow puts the citizens at danger, I want, I think there should be as many mediums as possible to get, for, for the citizens to be able to interact with these people who's saying that they're going to represent them. So, that, that's why I'm asking these questions, is because-
And I think the council could also entertain an ordinance that would expressly permit electioneering and signs on public property, and set some reasonable parameters, if that's what the council wanted to do, of course.
I don't know, I'd have to research what, what the, what other cities do, and the pros and cons.
Sure, no, that, that's absolutely a, a good approach, frankly, yeah, because obviously there could be some unintended consequences to opening everything up.
My biggest thing is so that all of us understood what the rules are, and to make sure that the rules apply equally and fairly across everyone.
Absolutely.
So, anytime I hear discussions about, hey, let's open it up, and let's just have it everywhere, everyone needs to understand that the state law probably violates the Constitution, right? Because it's giving special treatment to a particular class of non-commercial speech, it's saying, political speech, well, you can just do it anywhere, well, you know, but that, that's likely unconstitutional. So, I tell people, if you open it up to political signs, you're going to have to open it up to everything else, right?
That's right.
As long as it's non-commercial speech. So, it's not just electioneering, it's, for example, under state law, required to have, allow political signs here during-
It is against the law to solicit without a license in Texas, okay? To knock on my door, you're supposed to, everything except electioneering, because I went and looked that up, so I can, actually, I don't have to get a license to go knock on somebody's door, and so, it's, it's not considered solicitation. So, how, I'm, I'm just, maybe it's not exactly the same, but to me in my head, and, and me being just general public, it seems like it is.
Well, I will tell you this, the actual case that that comes from had to do with Jehovah's Witnesses going door-to-door, had nothing to do with electioneering. So, any non-commercial speech, whether it's religious, whether it's political, whether it's, you know, charitable, or whatever, we can't require them to obtain a permit before engaging in door-to-door solicitation, so, and that's-
Right, that's non-commercial speech, though?
Non-commercial, absolutely.
Right, non-commercial speech.
Okay.
So, I don't, I don't recall how y'all's solicitation ordinance is structured, but it's usually, once you cross the line of asking people to give money, or to engage in a commercial transaction, you have to get a permit.
Cindy, do you have a question?
Thank you. Since we've opened up, you know, early voting, and now, Polling Day voting, to anywhere within the county, I've been to polling places that say that you can't have any political signs or advertising 100 feet from the door, and then there's some people, or some places I've been, where they've done it from 100 feet from the front, anywhere along that front edge of the building. So, where exactly is that 100-foot radius start?
So, I, I-
Or end?
I, I have looked at this before, and that is up to the election judge for that particular polling place, right? So, they interpret it, I mean, it's, it's kind of general, it says, any, any entrance where a voter can enter to, to vote, electioneering is banned within 100 feet of that entrance. Where you measure from, is it from the door, from the porch, I, that, that's up to each election judge, yeah. But, they have to post signs, and if you go beyond the sign, electioneering, that's a, I think it's at least a Class A, or, I'm sorry, Class C misdemeanor. Any other questions? Good questions, by the way, thank you.
All right, thank you, Brett.
Appreciate it. Thank y'all very much.
Yeah, I want to say, really appreciate you coming, going over that, it's a confusing subject in some cases, I really appreciate it.
It is, happy to be here.
Thank you, Brett. All right, item number six, at, I have six, seven, we're in a public hearing. Considered an action regarding proposals to relocate surface improvements made to Veterans' Memorial at Kiwanis Park, the 333 West McLeary, consider the approval of a non-park use for the park property as a component of a proposed economic development project involving a multi-restaurant concept and entertainment venue. Is this brand, or is this?
I'd be happy to field this one, yeah. So, I've briefed most of you all prior to this meeting, just to let you know that this is an inevitable step associated with the economic development transaction that we've entered into with Local Favorite. Essentially, under Texas law, the city cannot sell parkland without having a ballot measure for the voters to, in fact, approve at a general election. And as you may surmise, that's a pretty daunting prospect, especially if you don't know the background behind it, so. But we are able to use a park for a non-park purpose, and in order to do that, the Texas Parks and Wildlife Code requires that we hold a public hearing, we provide three weeks' worth of public notice in the newspaper, and we make certain findings, essentially that you've considered the use, the non-park use of the park, there's no other feasible alternative for this, and you've taken all steps necessary to protect the true purpose of the park. And in this case, I think that's true, so, and, and Gabe could certainly provide additional details with respect to the Veterans Memorial and the improvements on the park, but the proposed plan is to relocate the Veterans Memorial improvements to a more favorable location, and then, at a future meeting, we will bring back a ground lease for Local Favorite to be able to use what's essentially just a quarter acre of land, to be incorporated into their surface use, it will be some parking and landscaping, et cetera, but at all times, the city will maintain fee ownership of that parcel. So, this is just a necessary procedural step, we hold the public hearing, and the mayor's been provided with the specific findings that are necessary to be made, but essentially, as I said, you're simply finding that there's no other feasible, feasible or prudent alternative use for the park, and that all measures to protect that particular use have been-
Yeah, and that's the important thing to know, is, we are moving the park, we're not getting rid of the park, we're moving to a more favorable location. I speak almost every year at the Veterans Day celebration, and where that location is, it's beset by train noise, traffic noise, it is not a very solemn location for a very solemn ceremony. We've talked to the Kiwanis folks, they're definitely in favor of this, and I've talked to a lot of veterans, too, that, at that celebration, and definitely would like to have a better place, a little larger, and much better parking, parking is just not the best, and also just by the trains and the loud noise, so, it'll work out well, and then help us with the little, couple projects, so, it's a, it's a good thing, all the way around. Counsel, any questions, comments, before opening up to the public? Yes, Cindy?
Do we have any idea of what the schedule is for the move of Kiwanis Park in relation to Local Favorites starting their construction?
That would be Gabe.
Gabe or Randy?
Oh. Who are you? I'll turn it over to Laura, she has all the details on the-
Okay.
Good morning, or, good evening, wow. I'm Laura Presley with Kimberly Horn. So, we have just made our second submittal of construction documents for the park relocation, city staff is reviewing those. We are aiming to bid the construction and begin late spring, so April, May, beginning construction, in order to have construction complete, and the monuments, flagpoles, all of that relocated, and ready to open by Veterans Day of this year.
Very good. And, one more question.
Go ahead.
The last two or three years, the weather has not been conducive to us meeting outdoors. What is our contingency plan for that?
New fire station. Beautiful, beautiful, big new fire station.
Across the street.
Across the street, absolutely, we've already talked about this.
And we hoping that to be open on Veterans Day.
Absolutely. Make that happen and die trying.
There you go.
All right, thank you.
No, it's a good point. So, we met inside the, the current fire station number one, which is, it's nice, they are very gracious, but fire station, the new fire station will be spectacular, and we'd love to show that off. Other questions, counsel? All right, this is a public hearing, it's open to anyone from the public that wishes to speak. I had two will turn in notices, but you're ready to speak now, either, anybody can speak on this subject right now, so please, the microphone is yours. It's a public hearing, Mr. Pete, you can speak, come on up.
John, Pete, I'm over here in Whisperwood Estates, Saginaw. I disagree with you that, I don't know how much veteran input y'all got, I asked Mr. Sinclair, and they didn't get very much at all. And what you're doing is you're taking it from a place of prominence, I disagree with Mr. Newsom over here saying, that's for noise and trains, it's actually a sign of prosperity, and that's why the Veterans Memorial are there, because we are prosperous because of this, at us. The only veteran that I know of is Charlie Tucker, are you, any of y'all veterans? Anybody in the audience, veterans? Raise your hand, please. One, my son is, anybody else? There we go. All right, so, we're not asking for special preference, the particular parks over there right now is a rectangular square, with the, you know, at the time, the service branches that are there, and it's kind of reverent, okay? It's kind of solemn. I got a chance to walk around the current location that y'all are going to try and put it to, like putting a square peg in a round hole, compared to what's over there now. You didn't get much input from anybody that has seen veterans' parks before, I showed Mr. Gabe, the city manager, I walked through it yesterday, and pointed out some features that I think would be lacking. You didn't get much input from us. We don't ask for much when we, when anybody goes to war, we just ask a place to bury our dead, okay? We're grateful we even got to Kiwanis Park now, and I don't know what veterans basically you've been talking to, but that's prosperity there. Get more input, redesign it a little bit better, put it in more prominent spot, we don't ask for much. Thanks.
Thing to speak.
Can I make one remark?
If you want.
My daycare is right across the street from it, and unfortunately, we have some homeless people, and I'm not, it's okay, it's not against the law to be homeless or anything, but I see them over there quite often, sometimes they urinate in the gazebo, Randy can tell you that, and they, they disregard it, they treat it terrible, and where it is now is a nice place, because everybody can see it, but it is very noisy, and I honestly feel like the veterans would probably want something more private, so y'all could see it more, and people are going to know it's there, we're going to make sure of that. And I'm sure that if you have some kind of input that you want to put on, and how it's designed, or whatever, I'm sure that Gabe and Randy would be more than happy to talk to you, and see if there's something we can't do to make the veterans happy also.
All right, anyone else like to speak?
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, Council, and civil service. I always thought this was kind of like the, the Justice League, you know, okay, so civil service. Your guys' monuments, your testaments to your good and faithful civil service is a vibrant community, okay? J.D. Pete, Saginaw, Whisper, son. Your testament was the vibrant community, the growth, the desire to come here, raise your kids, and inspire them to be better than you, okay? Veterans Memorial Park, as my dad said, they only ask for places to bury their dead overseas, and we will ask for the humble remembrance, the gratitude and thanks given for us for our ability to sign the dotted line for a blank check for Gulf Coast Sam. The current park, it is old, solemn, and built in an earlier time, before the growth, before the development, so honor that, cherish that, don't casually dismiss it. Those who serve seek to be inspired for the next generation, those who choose to wear the uniform represent the communities that they come from. How many folks at home realize that there was an army installation, middle of Saginaw, that little army depot, the maintenance facility? How many people are aware of that? That's a concrete, definitive, tangible attachment to the people that you represent for the community. My time in service, everybody I knew that came from Texas, they got together, they always intuitively got together, whatever, you know, however big Texas was, anybody from that unit, they always, they always respected each other. And as much as Saginaw is a example to the community of Fort Worth and your other fellow suburbs, continue to be inspiring, continue to drive yourself, continue to take the best inputs for those folks who are motivated and passionate about the communities that they have come to, and where they've come from. You have a Saginaw, Michigan, so, build community relations and have host days from Saginaw, Michigan. You have veterans that come from around the communities, we have veteran service organizations such as the American Legion, the Veterans of Foreign Wars, the Marine Corps League, the Navy League, input from them, you ask for input in councils, I would say, represent Saginaw's past and legacy by a cavalry soldier on a horse, you know, have that direct relations to that chism trail, have that direct relations to the grain that fed the cattle that those cavalry soldiers had to protect, that inspired another generation of air cav, you know, the worldly birds, and the motorized mechanized seventh cav. Get those sources of inspiration on the parks, get those inputs from those service organizations before you make a final decision. And as I wrap things up, I want to thank y'all, especially the civil service guys who allowed me and my dad to come here week after week, and, you know, to commiserate with y'all on those hard decisions, those thoughtful decisions you don't just rush into. I would minorly disparage Kimberly Horn, I think it was an uninspired design, and I'm here to help inspire and motivate those, because it may just be 1% that go active duty and get that, but if you can inspire, you know, one or two, because everything in Texas is bigger, right, inspire two young men and women to join by those parks and those memories, and don't just settle for that bare minimum. Thank y'all.
Thanks, sir, appreciate it.
Mr. Pete?
Where's my location?
Mr. Pete?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to add something to this, I know that the community stands behind the move for this park, and I'm sorry that, you know, this doesn't meet your agreement 100%, but one of the things that I love about this community is that with this community garden that sits next door, there are several people who were involved in that garden that have asked if they could participate in the landscaping of this, they want to have- They want to have, they want to put parts of their home, because they have family members that have served in the military, into this garden. They want to build a Purple Heart Garden, just all purple flowers, just to have a remembrance of those people who have served and have given every part of their lives in one form or another to the betterment of this United States. So, you know, the community, I think, stands behind this, and they want to make this even more reverent than what it is now. The fact that we could stand off to the side of the flight line that goes into Meacham Airfield, you'll be able to see the sides of these magnificent vintage aircraft that fly overhead rather than looking at the belly of it, I think is also going to be just a great addition because that's one of the things I love to do is stand in my backyard. You know, you can hear these planes flying over, oh, that's, that's old, that's cool. So, you know, a lot of people have contributed to this, and we do plan to make it better. And we'll have the area to be able to expand and unfortunately put more bricks commemorating the people who have served this country so well. Thank you.
You sent?
To be grateful that you guys are aspiring to not just accept the basic proposal, that you aspire to give for it. That's really something that helps y'all.
Any other, any other folks in the audience wish to speak? This is still a public hearing, so anyone can approach the microphone and speak on this item right now.
Yeah, I got something. When this came up, when the design for the park came up, I specifically asked if we had reached out to, and we had looked at recommendations from our services. And what was told was, we did, we did do that. We went, we went out and looked at that, and we looked, we looked at other designs and recommendations that was given and that was applied to this. So, I just want confirmation that that was indeed done.
Yes, so we, Kimberly Horn came and did public engagement with the Parks Advisory Board multiple times, as well as city council. In addition to that, we have, you know, a breadth of experience designing veterans memorials. We've done them in multiple cities, in DFW, as well as across the United States. As far as specific veterans outreach, that wasn't a part of our scope.
Right.
So, we tried to do that through having public meetings with the Parks Advisory Board, but that was the limit of the scope.
What I want to say is the biggest thing is, I absolutely don't want this to become a negative thing here. I think I can speak for the council. We, we're moving this to a spot because we honestly feel it'll be better, and it will bring more to our veterans, which all of us deserve, you know, deserve or credit to. And it is, there's, you know, it's out in the public area, but what, when we were there last time, like the mayor talked, I did go around and talk, all of us, I think, talked to them. And the veterans, it's interesting, they don't ask for much. And when you asked them, they were very, not very forthcoming, but what they'd say is, yeah, just anything. And, you know, you'd explain it to them, but it seems like they all wanted a place where they could meditate and maybe a little quiet area of solace. And that's what this, this area back here will give. And that's where it was laid out, and the benches and stuff, so, you know, that's, we're really trying to do something nicer. And, you know, definitely where it's at now with the train, you can say it's in a public area, but it's very noisy, and it's very, you know, things, you don't get much solace there to meditate and think.
Thank you, Ms. Blossom. Last chance for anyone to speak, going once, going twice. Then at 6:54, I take us out of a public hearing, and I want to entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve the non-park use of the park and, and funds that, one, there is no feasible or pursuit alternative to the use or taking of such land, and two, the program or project included all reasonable planning to minimize the harm to the land and as a park resulting from the use or taking.
I have a second. Cindy, second. Please cast your votes. And the mayor pro team will abstain from this vote. Awesome, pass this. Thank you, guys. Appreciate, thank you, Kimberly Horn, appreciate that. A lot of work went into this. Moving forward, I'm number seven at 6:55. We're back in the public hearing. Consideration action regarding recommendation for planning is under commission regarding request for a specific use permit to allow the construction and use of a carport on property located at 1145 West Hills, Harris. I believe Chief Spears is going to kick us off on this.
Thank you, Mayor, counsel. If you recall, the carport ordinance was recently brought before you for some revision. Those revisions were approved. This is the first S U P submittal for a carport. What occurred, sad to report, was a breakdown in communications. That was between staff members. The result of that breakdown is we did not afford the S U P applicant the information or guidance necessary in their pursuit of the S U P. What we had liked to have occurred and what will occur from this point forward, the chief building official will have an opportunity to have communication with the applicant, make the ordinance available, answer any questions about that, give intent or interpretation of the ordinance, and make recommendations to make sure their S U P brought forward gets approved. Like I say, that didn't happen. We would like to have that opportunity to meet with the applicant, to make sure they are successful going forward. The building official has had communication with the applicant regarding this, what occurred and what we'd like to go forward, and we have some options that have been presented to them and will continue to present to them, and that's kind of where we're at on this item. We would like to have that opportunity to meet with the applicant, to make sure it's successful.
Thank you, Chief. Yes, we will take no action on this tonight, but if the applicant, I believe, is here, if you would like to speak, you're certainly welcome to. This is a public hearing, so the applicant is allowed to speak if you would like to at this time.
Awesome.
If you want to, whatever you wanted, just introduce yourself, please.
My name's Colton Cupp, I'm the contractor for the proposed carport.
Thank you.
I do have a few things that I'd just like to rattle off and give you guys something to think about. I do believe what he was saying was correct. We just weren't provided the correct information to begin this process. We're also the first ones to go through this process. I'm not a resident of this community, I just, but I do work in surrounding counties and That being said, we've, we've already kind of put our time and efforts into this project and to try to get this thing approved. You know, we appreciate the apology or anything that came forth as far as, you know, why we didn't receive the information we were supposed to receive, but I get that we're the first ones, so it's, you know, it's a new, it's a new thing. I just, the, you know, Texas is hot. I think everybody in here would like to have a place to park their vehicle out of the sun. You know, you don't have to get in your car when it's 135 degrees. I think you would want that, you'd want your parents to have that, or, you know, whoever it is that is applying for this permit. And then the other thing is just damage due to weather, your vehicles, your, you know, it's, it's not an investment, but it's an asset, it's yours, and you'd like to protect it. And I think it's the right of any citizen to, you know, to do that. We do understand the S U P and the beautification requirements that y'all are trying to, you know, uphold. But at the same time, just, those are to be debated, I guess, as far as, you know, and this might not be the meeting for that, I guess, but who's to say what is, you know, acceptable or matches a home or still is used every day across the country for commercial residential buildings. It can be constructed in a way that is aesthetically pleasing and matches, you know, adhering structures. The other topic I wanted to bring up was the S U P permit itself, costing $750 for a resident to apply for something that, that's over 10% of the cost of what we were trying to put in their driveway in the first place, you know. So, like I said, I'm not a resident here, but I could only imagine that in the future y'all's residents are going to have a hard time swallowing that fact. And that's just for the consideration of the approval. That's, and I, I mean, seems a little outlandish. I do, like I said, I do work in White Settlement, Fort Worth, surrounding cities, Weatherford. This is, this is, and I'm not trying to, you know, throw stones or anything, but this has been the most difficult and hardest city to deal with as far as communication, approval processes, fees, things of that nature. I think all I have left to say, at the end of the day, I'm, as a contractor, just trying to provide a quality product at a decent price for y'all's citizens and surrounding cities. And I just, with the S U P being $750, it just kind of makes it hard to do that. I think in the future, if, you know, if anybody was to come to me and ask for, you know, a product of this nature, and I tell them it's going to be a $750 charge for me to come, you know, fill out paperwork and discuss with the city, I just, I don't see a lot of people doing that. And that might be what you guys are going for, but at the same time, back to the, you know, aesthetically pleasing structures and matching, you know, like materials of a home, there's lots of ways to do that with steel. We can paint, we can wood wrap, you know, we can add certain things to, to match a structure. And I don't really see that, you know, why this would be just outlawed, I guess, you know, for, it's, it's, it's an affordable way for someone to protect and cover their vehicles. And like I said, I just think, I think everybody in here can understand and would want and/or has the same thing for their vehicles at their home, so.
Thank you, Mr. Cupp.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to hear from the homeowners. What would y'all like to say? This is, either one of y'all. About...
I've lived here 30-plus years, and my kids even went to Valerie's daycare. So, I just, I don't know. It's, they're all in my neighborhood, everywhere. I don't think they look bad, or I don't think they do. I don't know. We don't live in a mansion, we just live in the neighborhood right here in Saginaw. I've lived there for 30 years or plus, and we just wanted to be able to park the cars under assault.
Understand.
Yeah. And I think we started this four months ago, roughly, thinking I would go down, I started at the city offices right here, thinking I'd spend $25 for a permit. We'll get something going on, and we gave him half down payment already on this. He spent lots of his time and effort and went to city hall, and they said, oh, no, you've got to go to the depot. And followed the signs, permits, come here, there's all these permits on the table. Well, I don't think that's the way we're doing it anymore. You've got to go out to the public works office, the animal shelter out there. And then they didn't really know what's going on.
And it was on the website.
And on the website. I've got, I've printed this when we started this, I've printed this. This is what you need. You need, you know, it's got to be structural support, minimum 26-gauge aluminum steel. Metal roof shall consist of minimum 26-gauge thick aluminum, you know, so that's our intent, and that's where we went.
So, basically, we're the guinea pigs.
And we're just glad to have the opportunity to talk about this, but we just wanted a carport when we started, and here we are.
Understand. And we want to work with you to make it happen, and I apologize, I'm happy to say, this was much more difficult. I think part of it is, A, we're new at this, sorry. Three months ago, this, or four months ago, this wasn't even an option, so we at least have an option now.
Yeah.
You bring up some really good points, this will help us be better. Sorry, you had to be the guinea pig, but we will get through it. That's why we're not going to take action now, and I want them to work with you, I want to make sure this is right so we can approve you. That's the whole reason. So, I'm sorry that we wasted your time, you had to come up here, but we're going to work it, we're going to make it better. Chief Spears is going to ramrod it, make sure we get a lot smoother and better next time. Of course, that won't help you, but it'll help the next guy, you know, but...
And at a rapid pace.
We just want a cap, we just want a carport. Otherwise, we may not get that better.
Besides, Julie, you like to stand out, make you a pretty one.
She's been here a long time.
And we can also discuss the fee. We weren't sure what the fee should be, so maybe we should discuss fees later, at a later point, what would be more reasonable. I don't know, but that's another... Nikki, you have something?
Yeah, I, I'm very interested in, okay, so you guys, I don't, you got, if they downloaded the wrong, or if they gave you the wrong form...
Did they give you the ordinance itself?
The wrong ordinance.
We printed it off the website.
Off the webpage.
The new one that was...
You know, I don't know anybody...
You got this one?
So, what I'm...
Not that one, that one wasn't...
What I, what I would really be interested in is, now that they give me the right one, what's, what's going to be the, how much is this going to cost you all out of your pocket to meet these new requirements?
I don't know.
I've yet to see the new requirements.
You what?
You still haven't gotten...
Here you go, here you go. You want it? There's the ordinance right there.
So, you still haven't met with, with us, the city, and they haven't explained exactly what needs to be done, so you guys can't even get a timeline?
Yeah, we, I had a phone call today with a gentleman, and very helpful, very nice, very nice guy, but as far as actual building requirements go, I have not, I have not received or seen...
Well, that ordinance was done on October the 18th of 2022, and so I don't know when you filed for your thing, but I'm sure that...
Well, we started shortly after that, but the webpage, I got it printed, or I would have never come up with this.
The website wasn't updated till after we'd already started this.
Well, I hope that y'all talked to Doug and Larry and let them try to get this straightened out.
So, I do have a question. So, is, are steel and sheet metal carports just outlawed by just no, no consideration? Or is it because of the design requirement? I mean, is, you know, I mean, there's other things that could be done, so is it just, y'all have just said, no steel and sheet metal carports, or is it a certain requirements that could be met?
We talked about a lot of things, how we can make this, you know, flow well with the neighborhood, similar to the house. We didn't want, you go to Old Saginaw, you see a lot of old carports that have been there for 30, they're...
They're rusty.
Yeah, hundreds. They're grandfather, they're grandfathered in, of course.
They're grandfathered in, yes.
But until this, we couldn't, you couldn't have any new ones until this. So, I think Nikki brought it up, said, why don't we have a carport ordinance? So, we started going through it. We tried to figure out what we wanted it to look like and talk, we weren't sure. So, this is sort of an ongoing learning process for us. We want it to look, I don't know, flow with the neighborhood, that's the best way to say, that's not the best way, but to be conducive to what the neighborhood looks like and not stand out like a, I don't know, sore thumb kind of deal. So, we're still learning.
On two streets, I have pictures of 30-something carports, and that's just two streets.
Oh, I know, I know, I know. Those are all the old ones, they're grandfathered in.
They look nice.
But Colton is going to do far better than any of them.
That's what we're hoping, so...
We're trying to keep Saginaw beautiful.
So, we'll try to work with Larry, work with Chief Spears, we'll make this happen.
That's the role that staff is intended to play in this, to bring it forward to you so that it doesn't get passed.
Yeah.
I think that's the conversation that needs to occurs with staff to make sure they're successful.
Mayor?
Yeah.
Well, the hardship that they've gone through with this, can we waive the $750 fee for this? Because they're the guinea pigs.
Good.
Can we do that, Brett?
I think no one's going to challenge that. Be tactful in that response.
If they, if they waive that, that would help you, maybe you could make a little prettier one.
Let's just, y'all, Cindy have something?
I do have a question. Since you've been here 30 years, I'm guessing, and you've lived in the same house, I'm guessing your house is not young. And this is probably a question for the contractor. How difficult is it to match the materials on the house to the new construction of the carport?
It's not very difficult. I would need to see exactly how much, you know, typically somebody says it has to have, you know, 75% masonry, 50% masonry, there's, there's certain requirements. But that's what I was saying, the carport, the carport could be constructed out of steel and then, you know, wrap the post with wood or hardy siding or whatever the house has on it, put like a wainscot, you know, stone around the post. There's, I mean, I guess there's other ways to go about it to make it match the house, and not to mention just the colors involved. But I guess to answer your question you were starting to ask earlier, the cost difference involved in a steel carport compared to a, you know, stick and mortar carport is, is pretty substantial.
What about wood?
Wood? Well, that's what I mean, stick, stick and mortar, I mean, if the house has brick on it. That's why, I mean, I guess, to answer your question, I don't, I can't answer without...
Yeah, it's got siding on there.
Right, so why couldn't we... Right, so why couldn't we?
I don't know why you couldn't wrap the post and siding.
Yeah.
It doesn't say that it has to be brick, more, it says like material. So what I, here, here's what I wish we'd do, is work with, work with our, our Public Works. I don't know if it's Larry Little.
That's Larry Little and Doug.
It's Larry.
And if you all come to an impasse, impasse means that you absolutely agree that you're getting, I guess we're better like we're getting the shaft, call me, call any one of us council members, and, you know, we'll, we'll figure out what's going on.
Well, I think that's why we're here right now.
Yeah.
I mean, not that we've been, not that we've received the shaft, but I, 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 I think we kinda have.
So if we talk.
We, we, we understand that.
Up until this point, yeah, up until today.
Then y'all will agree with what I have.
If, if Larry agrees.
Oh, if Larry agrees with it, yeah, I mean, if, yeah, if you, yeah.
And let, let's start by, everybody in the council is okay with it, we'll waive the $750 fee?
Yes, sir.
Y'all good with that? Do we need to make a motion for that, Brent, or what do we need to do?
No.
Okay. All right, so we'll waive the fee because of all your trouble, we're sorry, we'll do better next time, but.
We'd actually already paid it.
Maybe that $750.
You can get the money back, we, we can write you a check, I promise. We'll make that happen for your trouble.
Maybe that can help you buy wood or something, put on there, make it what makes, make the eve of your house, or whatever, the archery house. That's all we're trying to do, is keep Saginaw pretty.
No, and I understand that. One of my questions was, though, and that, 'cause that was one of the options that I had offered up, was let us build a steel structure, and then cover it with, you know, wood, and, but, I don't, I mean, per code, you can't put shingles on anything less than a three and twelve, so then you're asking your residents to, honestly, that would look worse to me.
My house didn't design with that.
Well, I mean, if, if they're, we have to follow the International Coding Standard.
Right.
Right? And, and again, our, that's what their job is, so.
Right.
They're not gonna ask you to do something that's gonna turn around and break the law. So if we can't put shingles on because it's a coding standard, can't put shingles on.
So could we?
To me, it's as simple.
So could we put metal?
Well, what else are there, other than shingles and metal?
That's what I'm asking.
Well, let, let's talk to Larry, let's not do, this is not really the time for that kinda discussion. Talk to Larry Little, our business, business guy, please, and we'll waive the fee, we'll do that, and we'll make it, make it happen.
No thatch roofing. No thatch roofing on the carport?
You're gonna, you're gonna.
Thatch.
That's true.
The grans.
Say yes or no to anything, it just depends on what's presented and bring for council. I hate to get in a debate about what would be approved and what would not be approved.
All right, thank you, guys, appreciate y'all coming in, sorry for all the trouble, we'll make this right.
Thank you, thanks.
All right, so we are still in this public hearing, we're gonna take no action, but it is a public hearing, so anyone else can speak if they want to on this item. Going once, going twice, so at 7:13, I take us out of public hearing, we will move on from number seven to item number eight. At 7:13, we're in public hearing. Consideration action regarding recommendation from Planning and Zoning Commission regarding ordinance, admitting the zoning ordinance to City Saginaw regarding a change zoning from single-family to community facility on approximately 5.25 acres, and of the one Arminder survey, abstract number 59, more commonly known as 320 and 304 West McLaRoe. Susie, oh, there you are. Susie Promino.
Yes.
Welcome.
So, Mr. Mayor and Council, this property was purchased with the intent to build a future library slash senior center. It's currently zoned for a single family, so that would not be allowed. So the first step in the process, if y'all want this project to succeed, is to change it to a community facility. So this is just rezoning.
Excellent. City-owned property, we're gonna change it, we're gonna build on a nice shiny new library and senior center.
Yes, sir.
Counsel, any questions?
For Susie.
Yeah, go ahead.
So I definitely know at the zoning, there was, I don't know if there are citizens here now, but there are citizens who had major concerns for the, the boundary, the fencing, privacy fencing. And I know that I asked questions, I, I read that, they didn't come back and ask questions. And they said, oh, well, that ain't for this. But I've also had things come to this council meeting, which I've been told, that ain't for this, and then come back later, we missed it, and we told. So I wanna make absolutely sure that we have something binding, that the city has to go back and at least have a, a garage gab in that area, and that we listen to those citizens who, who lived there before the city decided to build that, and make sure that we don't negatively impact their.
Of course. I think, I spoke to Lee, and he actually said that there's some already, that they're gonna be planning with that.
Yeah, Mayor, if I might, so Susie provided me four names of people who showed up at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting with some concerns, and I contact, I've reached out to all four of those people. One, I've only been able to contact one of them so far, but I'll continue to contact the other three, and make sure their, their concerns are, are answered. Most of those dealt with the proximity to their property lines of the building, or what was gonna be immediately behind their property, and what was gonna happen to their fence, and what kind of fencing screening was gonna be constructed in the project. And we, we do plan to have a neighborhood meeting, once we have received the hundred percent construction documents from the architects, and we're, we know that we're going forward with that plan, that we can share it with them.
Sure, we'll have a meeting before we lock it down, and I know you can't get a hundred percent agreement with everybody, but we'll have a, a general consensus from the citizens in that area that they're okay with that fencing.
So are people concerned having a senior center and a library as a neighbor? I mean, really? Is that, is that a big thing?
They were more so concerned just about the screening requirements.
I know the students get a little raucous sometimes, but I think they'll be pretty good neighbors, so.
Yes, but our ordinance states that if it abuts residential areas, that they do have to have at minimum an eight-foot fence, so.
That's fair, okay. Other questions for Susie?
I do have one. I know in the past, we've heard several citizen complaints about gaps between their fence and the new fences that have gone up, that have been alleyways for wild animals, snakes, tall weeds, mosquitoes. Do we plan to do that here, or do we plan to, you know, butt up close to their fences, so we don't have those alleyways that are not?
So the, the plan as it stands right now is for there to be a, an eight-foot privacy partition fence around the entire perimeter that actually backs up to any existing residences.
Okay.
And it would replace the existing fences that are along the property line. So, and there's a variety of different types of fences, there's some that are wooden, some that are chain link, there's even, I think, some metal paneling, but all of those, you know, if, if they are on the property line, then our intent is to replace those with the eight-foot new wooden fence.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Counsel, other questions? Thanks, Susie.
Yes, sir.
All right, we are still in a public hearing for this item, so anyone who wishes to speak on item number eight can do so at this time. If you don't fill out a card, you just approach the mic. Seeing none, then at 7:18, take us out of public hearing, and I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, make a motion that we approve the action regarding the changing of the zoning for the as presented.
Cindy Sager, please catch your vote. Motion passed, thank you, guys, thank you, Susie. We are at item number nine. Consideration action regarding agreement between City Saginaw and Community Link Mission for the operation and performance of the farmer's market at Saginaw Switchyard. Whitney Berry. Welcome, Whitney, how you doing? All right, if necessary, I will throw Karen Fullout here, if she gets a little raucous, just let me know, okay? Just say the word.
Uh-oh.
I know how y'all are.
Well, hi, everyone, I'm Whitney Berry, I work at Community Link, and I'm the farmer's market coordinator. This last season, our market really just continued to flourish and thrive. I often hear from potential vendors, and people reach out to me, and the first thing they always say is what positive things that they've heard about our market, really by word of mouth, and it, word of mouth, and it's just getting out there to other markets, other cities, about how positive and welcoming our market is to vendors, and really to everybody else. And that's really just to say the support that we have behind with the residents, the community, and our vendors, that they always show up, whether it's extremely hot in the summer, or we also had some really cold days this season, they're always there, they show up, they set up with everything they make, they bake, create, and grow, they're there to really support the community and small businesses. We also want to, this next season, help to promote health education. We did that last season with our pot program, our Power of Produce program. That's a program we have for the kids, and it really helps introduce ideas of farming, agricultural, healthy eating, different ideas for them. One of the things we did last summer is we taught them the life cycle of a plant, so I had seeds at all different stages, and they were actually able to plant a seed, take it home, and see it grow. So they were able to see where their food actually comes from, and then they get tokens to take to our farmer, so they can take home produce and really be kinda mini customers at our market. We also have our community booth that we offer vendor fee-free for any organization, or even city events, that can come and set up there and give their information. Our market, and one of the biggest pieces that it does, is we accept SNAP at our market. If you're not familiar, it's kind of similar to food stamps, and this really makes it equitable to all members of our community. We are able to double SNAP dollars. This is gonna be especially important, coming up in March, emergency SNAP benefits are being cut, so most people that have a higher amount, it's gonna be drastically cut, and that can really help with our market. We're able to double those dollars, they have $20, we can give them 40. We have meat, produce, spices, tons of things that they can spend and make those benefits go a little bit further. If anyone has any questions for me, I'm open.
Questions for Whitney?
Have we had any complaints?
Not that I know of. I always hear positive feedback from people at the market, haven't had any complaints that I know of.
Hey, does the city had any complaints whatsoever?
Only thing I hear is that people want more spaces and more, more booths.
That is true. They can always grow and have more spaces.
And we're talking, we're looking at that.
Yep.
We're looking at that expansion, so that's one thing I hear, is that more people wanna be involved.
Right, yeah.
It's been so successful, we're having more people, people lining up to be involved.
Yeah, I do, I have a waitlist already started for this season, and I try to rotate through just because the space is so small unless we go through the food truck part.
How many booths do we have, remind us?
Um, to fit into that space, I can fit, push it sometimes, I think I got about thirty-eight, almost forty, into the, just the gravel area last time, but I can expand it and go a little bit further. I tried to get about ninety for Christmas.
Right, for Christmas, we had a bunch more?
Yeah.
That's because they're all the way around the island.
Yes, I can try.
Normal forty-ish is about the norm.
Yeah, about forty, I can make work.
One of the things that I've noticed, one of the things that I've noticed a couple of times is we get a lot of wind gusts through there, and twice I've witnessed the canopies come, and I've seen people hit in the head with the, the legs, and I've, Paul and I are members of CERT, and we've asked if maybe CERT could come out there, provide rehab, freshwater, especially on the really hot days, you know, basic first aid, if it's needed for an emergency, that way it takes some of our resources from having to serve there, and we've got, and we fill those positions with volunteers. And I'd like to see something like that added.
Yeah, we're always open to that, to have partnerships with organizations like that.
So what needs to be done?
You can reach out to me, and we can set it up, a day for you guys to come out, if you wanna come out as many times as you want to have that, really just available to people there, especially in the summer, do it, it does get very, very hot. I haven't seen anybody hit in the head yet with one of the booths, but it does.
Twice.
Really?
Twice.
It does get very windy there, somewhere in the location, it just picks those up just at the right angle, but yeah, we'd be open to having that, it's a resource available for the community, we're behind that.
Especially in the summertime, you know, I've watched some of the vendors, 'cause I like to walk around and just watch, you know, how the people interact with the vendors, and vendor would say, oh, hey, you made a purchase, you get a free bottle of water, rather than trying to embarrass that person, and, 'cause you could tell that they desperately needed something to drink, they needed that refreshment.
It does get hot out there.
So, and I don't know if you guys carry water, it's yours booth for those types of situations?
Our info booth, we, we haven't so far. A lot of the vendors have it on hand, all the food trucks have it on hand, it's about five feet away, I can go grab one if there was an instance for that, that I'd be able to access.
Okay.
Mary.
I just wanted to say, the farmer's market is one of my favorite things about Saginaw. I don't think I've ever missed one. And I like the continuous improvement aspect of what you're doing, and you're always looking for ways to improve, and the vendors love it. I've gotten to know quite a few of them, and, and they're real happy with the way it's run, so I think it's just a, a great asset for the community, and I think you all are doing a great job.
Great, thank you.
Other questions for Whitney? All right, thank you, ma'am, appreciate it. I do have one card on this item, Kelly Stewart, you'd like to speak on this?
Thanks, sir.
You're good? Okay, didn't wanna leave you out, ma'am. All right, if no other questions, I will entertain a motion on item number nine.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to table this until the next meeting, because we have the little workshop for the budget, and so I think we need to table this also until next meeting.
Well, I guess my question is, why?
Well, because every time.
What would we gain from that?
Every time we talk about budget, we cut citizen things, and this is a citizen thing that I think we need to consider, looking into, I'm not saying cut it by any means, but I think we need to table it till after the budget workshop.
I mean, you can make a motion and see what the rest of the council thinks. I, I would not agree with that, I wanna move forward, especially since the next farmer's market is the first of March, or the second, so, March 11th, so we're up against the time for that. And I, well, go ahead, make your motion.
I make a motion that we table the Community Link until we go through our budget workshop.
I'll second that.
Cindy, second? All right, folks, cast your votes in favor of tabling our. I guess we're tabling. Four to four, okay. All right, we will table the next time.
Can we table act on it after we have our budget meeting?
You mean like tonight?
Yeah.
We might, could, yeah.
We could bring it back.
Yeah. I just wanna do the workshop first, I feel like that's the only.
Why didn't we, I wish you'd have said so, we could just move this item to behind the workshop then.
Well, table it till after the workshop's done.
Well, we could've done our presentation then, but.
Okay, okay.
Is that okay, can we bring it back? Is it okay with you all?
I just said till after the workshop, I didn't say, you know.
Could it be brought back tonight?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, item number 10, considering action regarding amendment number one to individual Alright, item number 10. Consideration regarding amendment number one to individual project order with Kimley Horn and Associates for final design of Knolls Drive. Director Park, what's your answer?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. This item is for consideration and action regarding amendment one to the IPO of Kimley Horn for the final design of Knolls Drive. It does have a financial impact, $250,000, which comes from the 2021 bond program. And for any questions, kind of, Brent and Ted will, with Kimley Horn will, kind of.
Any questions?
What all is included in this final design?
So, for the amendment?
Well, you said this is for the final design?
So the original contract was called Knolls Final Design because we had a separate Knolls Conceptual Design Contract. So this original contract included all of the final design for Knolls Phase One, Two, and Three. We ended up wanting to add the McRoy Culvert Crossing. And at the time, there was consideration for the pedestrian tunnel underneath McRoy. So this amendment covers all of the construction plans, estimates, documents, the floodplain modeling that we did and for that culvert crossing to raise it out of the floodplain. And then we also added waterline lowerings. We're redesigning the waterline all through Knolls Phase Three, which is south of McRoy down to Longhorn. And then we also added landscape and irrigation for all three phases of Knolls as well.
Okay. And I thought the, the design for the Knolls and McRoy intersection was supposed to be brought to us in December. Do we know when that's supposed to come to the council?
Brought to you just for an update?
For what?
For an update, or what was it being brought?
I thought y'all were going to bring the final design for our approval to us.
Isn't that a different phase? What phase are we talking about? Phase to phase to phase?
Phase, phase two, which would be the McRoy Roundabout, that's a 90%.
At Knolls?
Yes, ma'am.
That's not, that's not finished design yet?
No, it's not finished. I could definitely provide updates. I, I am not recalling saying that you would bring it to.
I thought I'd heard something that they were going to bring that to us. They thought around December.
So this is different than that?
But.
Let's not, let's.
No, this is very similarly related. I mean, this is just west of that intersection, I believe we're talking about, Knolls and McRoy, correct?
Yes.
Yes. So this is, this work would be a part of that plan set. So if there's a desire for us to come and give an update, we definitely can on the design and the timeline.
You want to explain the change related to the energy transfer line?
Yeah, I can as well. So at, at a time, there was a request for an alternative pedestrian crossing method at McRoy. And so we had briefly looked into a pedestrian bridge, quickly found out that that was not feasible dollar wise. And then we, we spent a lot more time looking at a tunnel crossing. So we had to look to see how that worked with the floodplain. But ultimately, once we determined its location needed to be near or above the existing gas line, we started talking with energy transfer and that was deemed to be not feasible because it would require a relocation of that line.
So.
So. Go ahead, you go ahead.
Yeah, you had me confused. Now I'm back. I'm back with you. I called it.
Okay.
So this is to raise it up to a 100-year floodplain, right?
Plus another foot for freeboard, yes.
Now, you had mentioned something on your reply back to me about some type of planks that you, 100-year floodplain, then you mentioned a plank or something. And I, I didn't know what.
Oh, the freeboard?
Yeah. Now, I didn't know what freeboard is.
Sorry. Freeboard is, we'll call it a factor of safety. So you, you always have at least a foot of, you don't want to design it to exactly the top of curb, right? So you leave an extra foot of freeboard is what we call it. But I forget that that's probably a nerdy engineering term.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just like, it's a, a gap, a, an extra foot of safety.
Okay, good. And the reason you can't put the, I'll call it a tunnel in is because you put the covers in, but the covers don't go as deep as what the tunnel would to get people across, or?
The tunnels are east of the gas line crossing. So they're kind of parallel to the gas line crossing. And for how wide they need to be, the tunnel, we needed to be further west. And that's right on top of that easement.
Okay.
I will say there was additionally a lot of concerns with the tunnel, safety wise.
Dollar wise?
Dollar wise.
You can't afford it in this budget.
We have those trees out back that grow money.
You know, so I think it was a request a few, several years back, several months back to consider the tunnel. And we were just finding obstacle after obstacle. And, you know, the energy transfer discussion kind of put the nail in the coffin. But, you know, speaking with staff and several people, it was just, at some point, when you're swimming uphill, you decide to give up. So. But the gas, gas company made that pretty official.
Other questions for Trenton?
So what are this, is the alternate plan for the pedestrians crossing McRoy now?
So at the roundabout, we will have raised crosswalks, which is, in my opinion, a extremely enhanced feature because we don't normally do those, along with the rapid flashing beacons that will be push activated. That, we've always had that. Whenever we discussed removing the tunnel, we spoke with Randy and we discussed adding a at-grade crossing west of the culvert. So it'll be, what's that first street? West of Knolls?
Woodcrest.
Woodcrest? It'll be closer to Woodcrest, kind of on the west side of the park. And so that will be a stripe crossing with signs and a push button with the flashing beacons as well.
At that intersection of Woodcrest and McRoy, is that what you're talking about right there?
Not at Woodcrest, but east of it.
Okay. Are y'all going to put something there? The reason I'm asking is because kids walk across there all the time.
Yes, that's where we were putting the crossing.
And I know the citizens have been asking for that for many, many years. So I know they will appreciate finally getting a crosswalk because there's no sidewalks on that south side of McRoy. So they have to cross the street and it's quite dangerous.
Yep.
So thank you for that.
So is there a request for a more formal update of Knolls Phase Two and Phase Three?
I think we want to see when it's finished. So when do you think it'll be finished?
The design?
Mm-hmm.
The design's very close to being finished. I would say, you know, we're about 99%, we'll be 99% done the next month. But right now, we're kind of waiting just for Knolls Phase One to be finished because with Bill being our main inspector, especially with Randy Edwards stepping down, Public Works doesn't really have the capacity to have two, you know, $10 million projects going at once. So the project will probably sit for a few months until we're nearing the end of Phase One. So right now, we're estimating that, you know, we'll be done next month, or let's call it the spring. And then we probably won't advertise. We had discussed May, June-ish, just to give us a few months to get all the contracts settled and then start construction as soon as Knolls Phase One is finished. And we said we wouldn't promise any dates at council, but let's call it.
Spring?
Late summer, early fall.
Summer, okay.
I do have a quick question. Is there ever going to be a sidewalk on the other side of McRoy going toward where the new little houses and everything are going to be? Because you're going to have more kids walking down through there. So I'm just sort of worried about there.
The sidewalk on Knolls for Phase Two?
No, on the other side, yeah.
For Phase Two, there'll be sidewalk.
It's on McRoy, not Knolls.
Southwest side of McRoy.
The West McRoy Phase?
It's like from Knolls to Woodcrest and then to where they're going to build the new little houses.
There'll be sidewalk on both sides.
Okay.
Of McRoy.
Thank you.
That's going to be a while.
Yeah, I know. But I just wanted to know because they're going to have a bunch of kids walking there, so.
For the crosswalk, is that going to be, I've seen it in grapevine with the, it's actually illuminated in the street versus just on poles. Is that something we're looking at?
Um.
Tends to get people's attention a lot more than just having something on a pole.
Additional like illumination for the pedestrian crosswalk, you're saying?
Flashing in the street, Paul, is that what you mean?
Yeah.
Just about in the street flashes, Steve?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah. As far as like the signs, they do flash, but a separate illumination, I think that's a great idea. We can actually, we can add that. I know in the roundabout, we're very intentional of putting illumination at the crosswalks. But the illumination design along the corridor, I don't think we typically coordinate that with the crosswalk locations, but that's a good idea.
A lot of the cities are starting to do that now. It just, people see it, it's a lot more visible.
And we have senior citizens and kids there.
Yes, or everyone. We all.
Neither one pay attention very well sometimes. So, yeah. I know, I'm there.
We got a flashing light around Basswood by our station too. I swear they think it's a quarter mile racetrack dropping green.
Push that and go. I got you.
Are any other questions for Trenton on item number 10? I will entertain a motion then.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the action regarding the individual project order with Kimley Horn as presented.
Okay. Mary second. Please cast your votes. Most passed. Thank you, guys. Thank you, Trenton. Thank you, Randy. Item number 11. At 7:37, we're back in a public hearing. Consideration action regarding ordinance number 2023-09, meaning appendix, the Saginaw, appendix B, the Saginaw subdivision ordinance of the Saginaw City Code, by repealing and replacing the city construction standards referenced in section 7.01b thereof in its entirety. Randy Newsome, Director of Public Works.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. This is something we've been working on for quite some time to get our details in our subdivision ordinance brought back up standard. Some of our details were outdated. Some of the materials we called for in there were not correct the way we want them. So we, we went through with Kimley Horn and staff and we, and our inspectors and we've, we've got everything corrected in those details. And this is just to amend that, that appendix B of that.
Counsel, any questions for Randy or Trenton? Mary?
Not, not really a question, but a comment that I imagine this took quite some time to come up with all this, all these changes. And I'm assuming that they are upgrades and/or getting rid of, you know, things that no longer apply and just updating everything to current standards.
Correct, yep.
Thank you.
We even, as much as the size of the rebar in, in the driveway approaches and the centers of them, it covered it all.
Thank you.
I got something.
Oh, turn it in.
I'd like to say, I really appreciate you all replied back and gave the summary of all of them to the, if, I don't know what it is, it made my life a lot easier. So I just want to say, I really appreciate that. Having to dig through all that nice, I don't know who put it together, but it was a very good summary, each one of them.
I appreciate it. I, I view this as one of, hopefully many will get this year of code updates. We've, we've asked for a couple of, several things to be looked at. And so I think this is a good start to get our code up to speed, up to updating. I know we have a lot more to go, but this is a great start, guys. Any questions, Counsel? We are in, we're still in a public hearing. So if any from the public wishes to speak, now is your time. You don't need to fill out a form. You can just approach the lectern. If not, then at 7:39, we'll take it out of a public hearing and entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that we approve the consideration action regarding amendment number one to the industrial project order IPO with Kimley Horn and Associates.
That's not, that's the wrong one, 11.
Wrong one?
You're reading 10. That's 11. Run 11.
Oh, I'm sorry. Then I approve number, I move that we approve consideration action regarding ordinance number 2023-09, amendment to appendix B.
Okay. Let's say it. Please cast your votes. Most passed. Thank you, guys. Thank you, Trenton. Thank you, Randy. We appreciate it. Alright, moving forward. Item number 12. So at 7:40, we're back in a public hearing. Consideration action regarding approval of request for a city initiative resulting of multi, multiple parcels to the NMU, Neighborhood Mixed Use. For that, our friend Abernussar, Peloton Land Solutions, welcome back.
Come on down, right?
Always good to see you.
Yes, great, great to be here. Although I have my annual, trees think it's spring, losing my voice. So here I am. Let's hope it lasts. Very exciting item for you tonight about zoning. If this feels familiar, it should be because we have talked about it a couple of times now in varying capacities. So Abernussar, as the mayor mentioned, with Peloton Land Solutions, we updated the comp plan, adopted that in March of last year. And then we created the NMU zoning district in September of last year. Council approved that. And then we held a public hearing at P&amp;Z and a public hearing at city council in November and December on this particular item, which is to start rezoning properties to the new NMU, which is Neighborhood Mixed Use District. And then in January, we unanimously approved an amendment to that NMU district before we actually applied it to the properties. So there was no action taken in November or December. We amended that NMU district and now we're back here to potentially take action on applying that NMU district to several properties as our first batch of comp plan implementation for rezoning. So in terms of comp plan implementation, the Neighborhood Mixed Use zoning started with 10 parcels. We have a recommendation for you this evening for some of those parcels based on P&amp;Z recommendation and property owner feedback to not apply that zoning to those, and I'll get to that. But we really want to encourage those commercial uses that we're looking for, shopping, dining, and entertainment, and make special places. So it does have a commercial frontage requirement. We do want a Main Street type feel. And we've got some resident protections in there that wouldn't be in there otherwise, like in some of our other districts. So these areas are adjacent to existing residential uses or neighborhoods. So the NMU district really protects our existing neighborhoods. And that was one of the goals that we had in the comp plan was to establish standards that were compatible with these existing residential areas. So the NMU district really does that. City council also added a provision in the NMU district to prevent overcrowding and requires certain space between residential structures. So it just kind of preserves the open space type feel and prevents some of the development that we might not find desirable. So here is your batch. So P&amp;Z recommended to remove parcels six and 10 back in November based on feedback from property owners at the public hearing. They just kind of, they didn't want the zoning to change on their properties. They felt like they already were familiar with it. So that was their recommendation. And then in February, we are recommending parcel nine be removed from the rezoning as well, also called the Courtney tract. So then we're left, left with parcels one through five and seven through eight as our first batch. Go ahead.
The six and 10?
Yep.
Were those the two?
From P&amp;Z's recommendation for them to remove.
This came up a while back?
Yes.
Here. And it was two parties that came and spoke. One, a husband and wife, and they explained exactly. And I thought that that got cleared out, that.
That one did, yes. That was Mr., the Chick-fil-A owners and, yeah.
Yeah, right. Okay. The second gentleman, who was actually a lawyer representing the people, he came up. I just want to know if this is.
Yeah, he represents the southern part, well, he represents the property owner for parcel nine, which is, we're recommending be removed this evening.
My concern on that is, he was not willing to tell us what he was aiming to use that for. So I'm obliged if he's not going to tell us what he's going to use it for. But the, the whole reason why you're doing this is to protect our citizens. I think it should be included.
Yep. So I'm not sure if the applicant's here this evening to answer those questions. But what we know from the city side is that we have had a pre-development meeting with them on the southern side, looking to do some commercial uses. Again, they're looking to protect their existing zoning that they have. However, no application has been submitted to the city. So we can't answer that question unless the applicant's here to do so. But yeah, definitely you can discuss as part of your.
I mean, that's the, the whole purpose of putting the specials on in was, was to protect the city and the citizens. Like I said, the guy, we specifically asked him, said, okay, what do you plan on building there? And he said, well, I'm not inclined to tell you right now. Well, then I'm not inclined to exempt you from these rules.
I see that, Mr. Mayor.
Just because we don't do it now doesn't mean we can't go back and do it later.
Well, then we do it now. It's on the table.
Yes, but this, parcel nine should not be on the table. They were advised that we weren't going to move forward with this parcel if we want to move forward. I would recommend we re-notice it and handle it separately. We can still do that. But that's why they're not in attendance this evening.
So, Mr. Mayor, I'll add, the property owner for parcel nine has indicated they likely will bring a plant development zoning because I don't think they have their ideas for the property finalized. So the intent was to not, if any property owners were contesting, to not rezon. It's going to come to the council in the future. So he can put something together that would not apply to this new zoning we got. And it would be something that says, the whole reason I put this zoning in was to keep that from happening. You see, you see where I'm going?
I do, I do. So we just need to make sure we're, we need to make sure we're not forcibly rezoning them after we've indicated to them that they don't need to be here this evening.
What is that currently zoned as?
Community commercial. It allows for a variety of commercial uses and would permit a, a drive-through restaurant without an SUP. And that's the main difference that was at issue in the pre-development meeting was that CC would allow it by right and Neighborhood Mixed Use would require an SUP. CC also does not include any residential uses.
And then six, is that the area that's behind the southern woman that isn't available?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes, ma'am.
So it's currently community commercial. No.
Parcel nine?
Yeah.
Yes.
Community commercial. And they have indicated an interest in doing APD, a plant development. Is that correct? And so.
That's correct.
That would still come before us. That would be a zoning change from community commercial, or would it?
Based on the existing zoning, if the applicant submits an application that complies with the zoning, it would follow whatever procedure is applicable to that application type. So not unless they requested a rezoning. Would it come back to you?
And wouldn't APD be a rezoning?
APD is a rezoning. They've indicated to me, and I believe to Bren, that they intend to bring, once their plans are finalized, a PD than we would have.
We need to be careful, Mary, about talking about this item that's not on the agenda. And Bren's over there bouncing in his chair, and I know what he's thinking. This, that number nine is not on the agenda. So we need to be very careful talking about that. We can discuss that another time. But tonight, that's not on the agenda. We did not let them notice that we can't really discuss that.
Right. So and, and if we want to talk about it conceptually, I'd recommend we go into closed session and just provide some legal advice. Because there, there are some other matters that need to be discussed if, if we're going to plow forward with that particular parcel.
I think we just take that, that one off the table and we'll discuss the ones that are on the, on the agenda. Continue.
Okay. So recommendation to approve rezoning parcels one through five and seven through eight. And I have zoom-ins of all of those. So I'll just click through those real quick. But we can circle back to any that you have questions on. And that's the, all of them there. And so next steps, we would do final action on these parcels this evening is what is proposed, and then if you give us direction to do so, we will bring forward another small batch if you find this to be a preferable process for this kind of thing. So that's why we did it this way, just small, to get started instead of lots all at once. If you look at how many we would potentially be rezoning that are undeveloped, it's more than you would think. So little batches is what we thought would be most prudent. So again, there's your recommendation. Happy to answer any questions.
President Abra, Cindy?
I have a question. Can we pull these out and vote for them independently, or do we have to vote for this all at once?
You have the option to make a specific motion to approve particular components to the recommendation, if that answers your question.
I have a concern with parcel number two. This is the rezoning on Sherwood Trail and Old Decatur Road south of the ILT.
Can we pull that one up on the screen, please?
Yes, sir. I will say in terms before, so my history on this project, I did speak to a couple of nearby property owners after one of the public hearings. We provided the cheat sheet that we provided in your packet, I believe, the difference between the two zoning districts, and so we emailed that to them directly and received no more negative feedback after that time. That's what I've got on this. Oh, we've also been in contact with the applicant. He was here speaking. He's the, Mr. Capehart, or I think that's how you say it. He owns the Chick-fil-A in another city and wants to develop some sort of special event venue, but very low-key, possibly kind of like the local favorite thing that you were considering, but very neighborhood compatible, quiet, and that type of thing is what he described to me. He did call this past week. We talked about it again, and he's strongly in favor of the zoning and feels like it's going to help him get funding to construct commercial uses.
My concern is the ILT and the traffic issues that we have there right now, and I'm looking at just, you know, if we're looking at this neighborhood mixed use, a lot more afternoon and evening traffic than what we're already dealing with, and I just see this as a horrible nightmare. And I'm not sure how we need to zone this, but I'm not sure neighborhood mixed use is what we need on this corner, just because we haven't resolved the issues that we're facing right now.
So this is currently zoned as?
Neighborhood commercial. PD with a base of neighborhood commercial, I believe. It's a PD with a base of neighborhood commercial. So in your packet, I think it was provided again tonight, there should be a cheat sheet between NC and NMU, and that would be the one that applies.
Wouldn't NMU be less dense than the, how it's zoned currently? I guess I have to answer that.
I would need to consult my little cheat sheet here to answer that one technically. So in terms of density, are we talking about residential or commercial intensity?
I think number of vehicles.
Number of vehicles, okay.
Coming and going.
So that is going to depend on the use and how much square footage those uses take up. In general, neighborhood commercial allows a variety of uses that we carried forward in the NMU district. However, in the NMU district, there's a lot more neighborhood protections, residential protections in terms of screening, landscaping, and those types of things.
But those, that's not the issue here. The issue is the traffic.
Yeah, I understand. Trying to answer your question without having a submittal from the applicant. So, you know, in general, the maximum building height is going to be less in neighborhood mixed use, which would reduce the intensity potentially of any residential development. So it could be less density, dense to your answer, Mr. Mayor, because it would be a less height permitted than neighborhood commercial. In terms of other residential uses, we now have that 15-foot minimum separation, landscape buffers, all that starts constraining the building envelope a bit, which could reduce the density from the existing zoning. And then we also freed up some of the commercial uses, which would be more compatible with residential. So some of those that we selected generate less trips, because we want to make sure that we're not allowing very, very intense uses next to residential areas. I know I can't answer your question specifically, but.
Yeah, so that doesn't help me.
Yes, ma'am.
And Bren, let me know if I'm out of line, and I'm serious, because I live very close to this location, but not close enough to have been a person that needed to be legally notified. So would it be appropriate for me to comment?
Absolutely. You have to be within two of them.
So I, as a homeowner in that area, would vastly prefer the neighborhood mixed use than what is there right now, which is neighborhood commercial. It gives the property owner more protection. It would be much less intense and, you know, has a lot of requirements that straight neighborhood commercial does not have. So I welcome that development whenever it does occur, and I think it would be much more preferable than just straight neighborhood commercial. Neighborhood mixed use is a winning situation for our city, and it protects existing neighborhoods. And it is preferable to just one standard zoning classification that nowadays is really kind of old-fashioned. And, you know, more and more cities, especially those that have a lot of vacant land, are going to these more flexible zoning classifications. So I'm very much in favor for not taking this out of the discussion.
And councilwoman, just while I have it in front of me in terms of the cheat sheet, as I was saying, it's beginning to constrain the building envelope versus neighborhood commercial. So in NMU, there's a requirement of a 20-foot landscape buffer along any residential property line, canopy trees planted one per 30 linear feet, and they have to screen parking from adjacent properties with a living compatibility screen, which we define in the ordinance, and neighborhood commercial doesn't have any of those requirements. So, you know, it begins to limit the intensity as well.
Wait, ma'am.
We all are very concerned about the ILT traffic. That is being addressed as we speak, and we do not have the right to keep property owners from developing their property because our city happens to have a traffic problem in the area. Those are two separate issues. So I don't think we should let that influence our decision.
Is there a lot of parking there? Maybe ILT can share their parking lot.
That is a different, a different issue. We need to be careful about conflating two issues, but.
So people right now, correct me if I'm wrong, they park along that property line. Is that correct?
Along the northern property line?
Of the, right, on the south side of Sherwood Trail. I've driven by there. I've seen cars parked on Old Decatur, lined up on Old Decatur. They're parked on that eastbound lane on Sherwood Trail. You know, you're not going to have people be able to get in and out of this property. I just, I don't know which is, I don't know which is better or which is worse. I, you know, if it's neighborhood commercial, they could use that parking lot to park there and go across the street and go pick up their kids. I could see that. If you've got mixed use and homes already there, I think there'll be less parking available for people to go in and pick up their kids from ILT. I just, I, I want to pull this one out and vote on it separately.
And I can't agree with that more than I think of it, because we can't let the ILT parking issue damage this guy's ability to do business. I think that would be really dangerous. It's a dangerous precedent to set. Is ILT a parking problem? Absolutely. We've got to address that. We're trying to. We've got to keep on it. I would view this as separately, and even if there are parking places there, I don't think that this landlord would want the ILT folks to go park. They wouldn't want that at all. We would need to get.
And the landowners in favor of this? The landlord owner has given us written permission to go ahead with this zoning change?
We have not received written permission, no. I have some email correspondence checking on the status of the rezoning case, and he's given verbal.
He's on record at council saying, he was here last time.
Yeah, so maybe on video.
He was a Chick-fil-A guy, so it's, I mean, he said, yes, I'm in favor of this.
Yeah.
When he laid out his, I mean, he's the, him and his wife's the one that laid out the plan, kind of their envision, and it kind of fit to what some of the citizens wanted, what they envisioned to build their.
And if I may take just a slight nerdy diversion, because I know that I do that sometimes, but I feel like it's applicable here. In the comp plan, one of the most resounding themes that we heard was complementary to another resounding theme. We're concerned about traffic, and we want Saginaw to be more walkable. Neighborhood mixed use is intended to have neighborhood-serving, commercial and residential type development that people can walk to, maybe from your home, and.
I get that.
Yeah, so this is kind of trying to free that up, to get those, you know, restaurants and retail.
And I get that. I understand that, but I'm just seeing, I'm trying to look at the whole picture, not the little piece of property. And I see ILT is a huge issue with trying to develop anything here and creating a bigger problem than what we've already got.
I, I do have a parallel. So when school lets out on Blue Mound Road High School, right? If anyone's been to the Starbucks or Chipotle at that time, there's a flood of students. They mobile order, so if I don't get there before they do, I know I should mobile order when I'm at Basswood and 35. No, but, so they all start walking to that development because there's places for them to eat and hang out. It's possible that it could help disperse some of the traffic if they had somewhere to go after school. I'm not sure how many cars, but it is intended to be.
See them going across, spending that kind of money.
Cindy, it sounds like what Abra's saying is, there's a really strong likeliness that the, with the new zoning, the square footage of these buildings would be smaller due to the buffers and whatnot. And the square footage is what we use to determine the expected traffic impact. So I think, you know, given the hypothetical uses, that that would be your best-case scenario for reducing the amount of traffic.
Yeah, I don't see.
And then given the tangible scenario of the Chick-fil-A owners, though, the peak hour that the ILT is creating right now, which in the afternoon is like 2:30 to 3:30, wouldn't really overlap any peak hour we could expect from these uses. So I don't, I don't personally see those in conflict.
Well, and I'm just saying, I just see that time expanding. I've been through there a few times, and I don't know what trees do to fix the problem. It just makes it look pretty. It doesn't fix a problem.
If you put a tree, you can't park a car there.
That is correct.
And then they're going to back up further on, on Old Decatur.
We got, we got to fix the ILT problem. That's, you're absolutely right, but that's sort of separate from this, and I don't want to cut off this guy's.
It is, but it's not.
I don't want to cut off this guy's business because we have a traffic problem that we need to address. It's our fault. City's fault. We got to address it. We're going to punish this guy financially, potentially, and I wouldn't want to do that based on that.
That's a valid point, but we still have a problem that we got to fix.
We do, absolutely.
And then, and it's directly related to this property, and I don't know when they plan on developing. The other question I have is on parcel seven and eight, which is the McLaRoe Woodcrest developer, corner. Again, neighborhood mixed use. What's the advantage of doing that over office professional? That seems to me like that would be, you know, a better use for that particular property.
So, so in terms of what Councilwoman Copeland brought up about the progressive-type nature of these neighborhood mixed use districts, you know, it frees up low-intensity commercial uses, including office. But Saginaw during the comp plan, I can pretty safely say I did not hear anyone say, we want more office. They said, we want more restaurants, shopping, entertainment, places to hang out, family-friendly type development. So, you know, in line with the future land use plan that you guys, you know, worked on and adopted, this is how to make that vision a reality. But office would be allowed. You would just probably see it with a small restaurant or something of that nature.
I think that piece of property with proximity to the park opens up an opportunity, coffee shop, tea shop, ice cream, something like that, that the residents have been asking for.
To create more of an experience, you go to the park, you eat, you dine, walk.
Within walking distance. Again, it's at whole walking distance.
Yep.
Well, we're hoping. Other questions for Abra? Thank you, ma'am.
No problem.
All right, I do have, this is a public hearing, so anyone wishes to speak may speak at this time. Mr. Pete, turn in the cards, if you can come up. It's sort of 12 and 13. You can talk about either or both. And I want to make sure we have our air conditioning on, because it's getting a little warm in here. Do we not pay the bill or something? Because I'm a little. There you go.
Here we go again. Seems like this is going to be a repeat from 6th of December, when we found out that Planning and Zoning Committee had their meeting on election night of 8th November for this big parcel distribution of rezoning, okay? City manager was absent. I'm glad you're back, Mr. Lawson. Mr. Tucker is gone, so we're back at 6:00. I don't know what to tell you all, except that this should be done in a town hall format. You're saying that you want citizen involvement. Well, you negated that when Planning and Zoning Committee had it on 8th of November over there in the library on election night, okay, for a public hearing for that. So y'all failed citizenship on that, so you don't get a merit badge for that, okay? Town hall would be best. You want interaction besides just having your four points on your minimum notification on people? Well, then get the surrounding neighborhoods involved as well, okay? So that's what I'm thinking. I mean, how, I got a chance to talk to him on Monday. I asked him point blank, how did that planning and zoning meeting happen on election night? And you told me it was scheduled. Yeah, nod your head, but to me, that's bad citizenship. You want involvement on planning and zoning, you get the people involved, and as for you, it's the same thing. Call out and get people involved, and let the property owners with the current zoning in there now fulfill the core requirements for what's there with the people, with the current citizens' involvement, the town hall style. You want question and answer and feedback directly and not relying on a 2018 survey that I end up going to? You know, I didn't, I guess the roundabouts are coming two, two at a time. Fort Worth is having a moratorium on them, you know? But I'm going to remind you that that Planning and Zoning Commission had their meeting on election night, right next door. So you negated and diluted voted participation. Citizen involvement on this, thanks.
Anyone else want to speak? This is a public hearing for item number 12. Anyone who wants to speak at this time, if you would like to.
Mayor, council, staff, it's doggone good to see my city officials. As far as I know, that Planning and Zoning Commission meeting on election night was all up on the, up and up. Everything was done properly. We discussed every one of these parcels in batch one, and I'd like to encourage you all to pass all this for the new zoning. I think this puts another arrow in Mr. Reinhardt's quiver to get more infill development here and tax revenues. So that's my thoughts on that, and I'm sorry, Miss Cindy, the traffic issues will crop up on every. issues will crop up on every single development that comes up. I mean, I saw a comment, and whether or not it's valid or not, about apartment dwellers didn't want to pay a parking fee and parking on residential streets. So there is an issue with that, and it's going to be everywhere. Because the city's growing, we got 25,000 and getting more, and I want to see more. So, anyway, I just highly encourage y'all to pass all this, and I'm looking forward to the second batch.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brent. Appreciate it, sir. All right, item number 12, any other public input? If not, at 8:10, take us out of a public hearing. I'll entertain a motion for item number 12.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the city-initiated rezoning of multiple parcels to neighborhood mixed use, and those are parcels 1 through 5 and 7 and 8.
Is that all in 13 and 14? I think that's. 12 is which one? Okay.
It's all my fault.
So 12, so all the ones except number 4 in 12?
Fine.
Okay. Do I have a second on that? Paul's second. Please cast your vote. Those best, thank you, guys. Thank you. All right. So then at 8:11, we're back in public hearing for number 13. You want to come back up? This is just number 4, right?
Yes, so this is the exact same thing, but only parcel 4.
So why don't we back them apart?
Um, to allow Paul to.
Oh, that's right. Paul, I forgot. But Paul knew. So Mr. Councilman Faleggi has to excuse himself because of his residence. He is close to this product. Thank you for reminding me. All right, so same thing, item number 13, all the same mixed use except for, this is just parcel number 4. So it is a public hearing. Any que, or first, any questions, counsel? If not, it's a public hearing. Anyone is allowed to speak that would like to at this time. Hearing none at 8:12, take side of a public hearing, and I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the city-initiated rezoning to NMU for track number 4.
All right, do I have a second? Make a second. Please cast your vote. With the record reflected, Councilman Faleggi has a conflict and did abstain from this vote. Item 14, considering exact regarding resident number 2023, that's O3, adopting the 2023 work plan. City manager Gabe Ray.
Mayor and council, this is the fourth time we've brought this before you. I think it'll be hopefully quick and easy. The only additional information, I'm deferred to Chief Spears to talk about projects or, excuse me, ordinances that we would look, staff would look at changing. But other than that, we have 12 annual work plan projects. For those viewing at home, these projects came from council members, so this will set priorities for staff for the year. With that, I defer to Chief Spears.
Thank you, sir. Thank you again, mayor and council. Our chief building official and code-compliant staff were asked to identify a priority of ordinances or a top 10, if you will, with some defined criteria that they were gauging those against. Ordinance such as ones that consume the most staff time, or create the most controversy, or generate the most complaints. Staff has completed that task. We have 10 of those we'll bring. Before you start in next meeting, we're going to only bring a couple of those to a meeting at a time. Staff's prepared to provide ordinance background considerations, visual examples, staff recommendation on the ordinance for y'all to consider any action that you might want to take on that ordinance in the, in the future. The first one will obviously be, or include off-street parking. That's one that's been in contention, and we've talked about it a couple of times, but we'll be bringing those for you starting next meeting.
All right, council, other questions? Question for Chief Spears on this topic? All right, if not, questions on the rest of the work plan, which we've seen before? Any other questions you want to specifically add more detail, anything, or is there anything missing that is on this work plan that we need to add? This is the time to do it. Or you want to take off? We can do that, too, so. I do have one question, and this may be for you, or it may be for you, Mr. Parks Board. The Parks Action Plan, is that a doable list? It's a lot of stuff. It's a good list, I agree. Can we do it all in 2023?
So, yeah, the request, that was from Councilmember Lawson for the Parks Action Plan. We had a similar scope of work that went through the Parks Board that's already been approved, so really with a few additions, I think that's something we can complete in the next year. I feel like the, I won't speak for the Parks Board chair, but they're aware of some of the concerns.
All right, just want to make sure. That's fair. I want to set us up for success. All right, council, other questions?
Do we think we can get this work plan completed this year, or is there going to things that roll over into next year?
It's a great question. I, I think the only projects that would carry over potentially would be the construction projects. Well, not potentially, certainly with the library and senior center and the next phases of Knowles. So, you know, if you wanted to remove that project, we're already committed with bonds. We know we're going to do them.
They'll start this year, but not finish this year.
That's correct.
This calendar.
That's what I was asking.
Yep. That's a good question.
It's okay to carry it over, right? It's just, we know it's going to go to 24.
I was just wondering about the other ones.
Yep.
That's fair.
Knowles Phase 3 would not start this year. We've actually been discussing perhaps moving the McLauroy section in front of Knowles Phase 3. But that would, I think ideally, start in 2024.
Okay. All right, any other questions, council?
I'm pretty excited about it. I think there's some big-ticket items on here, some things that we've needed to address. Some of them aren't necessarily fun or sexy, but they got to get done.
That's the nature of the job, isn't it?
I'm willing to get this voted on and put Gabe under the spotlight to get it done.
Let's do it. All right, and if no other questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion for item number 14.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the action regarding resolution number 2023-03, adopting the work plan.
Okay. Cindy's second. Please cast your votes. All right, thank you, Gabe. Thank you, staff. Let's do it. All right, moving forward, item number 16, Budget Workshop. Kim Quinn.
Thank you, mayor and city council. This is not usually the time of year we do a budget workshop, but this was requested by the city council at the last council meeting. And so here we are. I presented some slides for you. Okay, the, the workshop is a result of the action that y'all took last council meeting for mid-year salary adjustments. And so that first column was the numbers that you were given, that you approved in the mid-year, and we talked about the cost of full-year funding, so that would be effective for the next fiscal year, '23, '24. And those are the full-year funding based on those estimates. So that's what this first slide is. This is just a reminder of the tax rate and how Saginaw relates, compares to the other cities within Tarrant County. Gabe sent this table out, I think, in a Fri, one of his Friday updates, and this is just split out into two, so it's not so-so hard to see. I sorted, it said, out of, there are 41 cities that are at least partially in Tarrant County, and this is just sorting them by total tax rate. And what this shows you is that we, and if it's in yellow, then it's below the average, and the blue indicates that it's higher than the average. And I just wanted to point out here that we are below average for total tax rate. If you look at just MNO, we are the ninth lowest, and I'll remind you, the MNO tax rate is the portion that goes to the general fund, and the INS is the debt service. So the MNO is for operating, the general operations of the city. We are the ninth lowest. Really, what's making the, and we're still overall average lowest, but the higher end of us is the INS. And again, that's just a result of issuing the debt that was voter-approved in the 2021 law election. I also pointed out that we're one of only two in Tarrant County that do $100,000 senior exemption. And I'm just going to go through these. If you've got questions, feel free to interrupt me. You're familiar with this slide. This, again, is just a reminder that out of the citizens' total tax bill, the city only receives 20%. So 20% of the total goes to the city.
And that was 18% last year, wasn't it?
I don't recall. I, I don't recall the percentage. I think it was a little bit less. It was 18 or 19, perhaps. The total, the total tax bill is just under $5,500, and the city's share is $1,100. Again, that's for operating and debt. This is just a graphic representation of the, of the tax rate over the la, since 2003, and then, and it splits it out between operating and debt. So overall, you can see the total, and then you can also see the MNO. So the operating rate has gone down. That's not to say that the amount of revenue has gone down, but as values increase, the rate decreases. It's just a good way to show that. This is just a reminder that in the overall general fund, we've got a budget of $21 million. Just over 15 million of it is salary and benefits. There's 21% of operating, and then the 7% is capital. Those tend to be one-time items and not necessarily funded with the tax rate. It's usually fund balance. So when you're looking to cut, it really, the biggest part of the pie is salary and benefits. This is a slide that I haven't updated since I showed it to you in August, but I just wanted to remind you, over the last 15 years, if we look at the staff per thousand population, it was 5.79 in 2009, and in 2023, it's 5.79. So the same amount of staff per thousand population in 15 years. I think that shows the efficiency of our, of our operations here at Saginaw. And this is a similar graph. It's spending per capita for, over the last 15 years, and it's adjusted for inflation. Again, I haven't updated it in the last few months. It was done in August. But I just wanted to remind you, again, I think this shows that the average, the spending per capita in 2009 was $620, and in 2023, it's $670. So in 15 years, that's only an 8% increase. So now we get to the items that have been discussed before. If there is an appetite to make reductions, and again, this would not be in our current year budget, it would be beginning October 2023 through September of 2024. And we had discussed that perhaps it would be prudent to reduce items that would not impact the necessary operations and the nice-to-have items. And so that's what this list is here. These to, these cost estimates are total cost estimates, so if you were to reduce one of these items, this is not the total cost. I mean, this would not be the total savings, right? So the total cost of, say, the Fourth of July, first of all, it's not all general fund, and second of all, it's not all cash that we spend. Like, for example, part of the, some of the people that work for, at the Fourth of July are getting comp time and not overtime. So it would just be the overtime savings. And if those, if that's your wish, we can get, we can drill down to better estimates of what the savings would be. So that's just a list that you've seen before.
So on that, though, if you're giving them comp time, it's hurting our productivity costs, right?
It's hurting our productivity.
Because you're, you're paying them, and they're off, so they're not here to work.
That's true. That's true. They would take off time, and it is a liability that we book, but it's not cash.
Right, it's not cash. I just want to, it, it still impacts us in that now, they're not doing their regular job because they're, they're having comp time.
It is. They would take the time off during their regular hours to do their regular job. Correct. Okay, and then the other items that you may consider, again, these are not necessarily considered necessary items. They're more than nice-to-have items. The citizens certainly like these. The other issues here are, these are seasonal employees, so if you chose to make reductions to staff, it's a little bit easier to not cut a position that's filled with somebody. These are positions that are just filled for a portion of the year and not full-time employees. And so that's why they are listed on this slide. And then this is just a graph that was used last August when we were talking about the tax rate and possible reductions, and this is, just gives you an idea. The first two items are just items that were discussed last summer, and then the last bullets there are just cost of average employees, if that's your direction that you're leaning. And that's all I have prepared for you as far as information.
Yeah, so when the citizens passed the, you want to start all this, the citizens passed the bond in 2021. We passed three bonds, the ABC bonds. We said on those that we would raise taxes to pay for these bonds. We did not say we would cut services or cut staff. But keep that in mind. We did not say, we did not tell them, "If you vote for this, we're going to fire police officers," or "We're going to cut a maintenance worker," or "We're not going to fund the pool." But please keep that in mind. We sold the citizens a bill of goods that we will build these services, a new senior center, a new library, new roads, and it will cost this much, and your taxes will go up X amount. And that's a, our estimates were pretty, pretty solid. So they voted for these, not saying they're, it's a trade-off. You're doing this. They said, we said we'd do this in addition to what we currently do, which is the staff we have, which is the services we provide. I think it would be very poor form to start cutting the Fourth of July thing that people love, or the community, or the community linked, the farmer's market, or.
If I could just interrupt right there.
I'm sorry.
The, and so we tabled, or delayed the vote on the farmer's market, but that funding does not come from the general fund, and it would not have a tax rate impact. It's funded with hotel-motel occupancy tax. It's the promotion of the city.
Right, same as some of the train and grain is.
Yes, yes.
Hotel, H-O-T, yeah. So, so just keep that in mind, that we are not here to cut staff. We're a growing city. Cutting staff would be going in the opposite direction, getting our citizens less services than what they expect. So we sort of made a promise to them when they voted for this, that yes, we will do this. We will build this road. We will build you a senior center. It'll cost you more taxes, but that's the trade-off. We did not say, "We're going to build you a senior center, but we can't afford to staff it." That would be ridiculous on our part. That would be very poor planning on our part. So we said, yes, we will build a road. Yes, we will build a senior center. Yes, we will build a library. We'll improve our parks, $4 million for parks. We also need people to maintain those parks, to upgrade those parks, to work in there. So we can't go about cutting people. So this is just, and it's so dangerous and demotivating to our staff and our employees, and we start talking about cutting heads. Oh, my goodness. I mean, I've, I've talked to some firefighters today about similar things, and they were concerned about just where we're going, what we're doing. I mean, we are behind us in, in some of our salaries. We know that. We're working to address that. So this, to talk this reduction in services is really going in the wrong direction. For a growing, thriving city, we're only going to get more tax revenue because more people are coming, more businesses, more entertainment venues, which will bring sales tax and property tax. So we're going in the right direction, but let's be careful with a lot of these. We talked about cutting this, just for the sake of a couple of angry folks on Facebook that did not read when they voted for or against the bond package. So the bond package, yes, requires taxes. That stuff doesn't come for free. Senior center is not cheap, but it's worth it. So that's my thing. Two cents, other council members input? Mary?
To build on that a little bit, I think that this dollar amount changes from year to year because of. I think that this, uh, dollar amount changes from year to year because of, you know, the property tax revenue we get, et cetera. But a rule of thumb you gave us, I believe it was two years ago, on average, you could say if that, that $250,000 equates to one cent.
Yes, ma'am. In this last, this last fiscal year, a cent was about 260,000. And it's really would, I don't feel comfortable making estimates of what it might be yet. We have, like I said, last council meeting, we haven't even gotten our preliminary values. We won't get our first set of values until mid-April.
And, and my point of bringing that up is just to say, this body would have to cut quite a bit to make any impact that would be noticed by our taxpayers. And, and I would say I agree wholeheartedly with everything that Todd mentioned that, you know, we don't want to provide services for our citizens and then take them away. We don't want to, you know, make our city have a lower quality of life than what it has now. So I don't feel that cutting these items would, would be helpful at all.
So I, I, just so we're perfectly clear here, this got put on table not, not because of the bond elections. It's got put on table because it's just stayed out. We have not been taking care of the employees of Saginaw and we've let them get way behind the curve. Wasn't you, wasn't me, I don't know who was on it, maybe it doesn't matter, but just that, that's what it is. And we've taken a double hit in that, uh, the market has gotten really tight. All the cities out here are looking for people. Okay? So we've got, we've got a double hit now. One, we're behind the curve because we, we haven't been keeping up. And then two, all of a sudden inflation, everything hit. So we came out, we had, had a beautiful thing presented to us to show us, show us really, we're in trouble. And if we don't do something, we're gonna, you know, we're gonna either have to outsource everything or do something else. And so one of them was, okay, how do we get in a multi, that's what we, that's what I've asked for, and I know some of the other council members there. Give us a multi-year plan, how we get our, the employees of Saginaw who deserve it. How do we get them, how do we get them back to, you know, to where they deserve it, where they're getting an honest pays day for an honest pays work? Great. Absolutely. Want to see that. And, and we got the beginnings of that. But the problem is that comes at a cost. Okay? So now we're sitting here trying to figure out, okay, we have to do this. Absolutely. Now, how do we pay for it? It's just like anything else in your own personal budget. How do we do it? We've only got a couple knobs to turn. One is we gotta look at the budget and we gotta ask ourselves these uncomfortable questions of, okay, you know, do we have to spend $100,000 on a training game? Maybe we do. I don't know. But we have to ask, and that's our job here to ask that question. Okay? And, but, you know, and the last knob that we should turn is a knob, but if we have to, I know I'm willing to, if we have to, if we've looked at every other stone to make sure our employees are, you know, are being done right, is to raise taxes. But I can tell you right now, I'm, I'm not going to raise taxes on our citizens until we go over this budget and make sure that we got a good solid, that we've done our due diligence. And if that upsets some people, then it upsets some people. You know, I'm, I hope everybody knows, I'm 100% for getting our employees what they deserve. I, I think we've done them an injustice. I'll tell you that right now. But we also have to look at the, it's gotta be paid for. And like I say, there's only two knobs we got. We either figure out what we do have to have, we have to ask them. We have to look at it and we have to use Kim to tell us, well, if you cut that, it's not, there's some things ain't gonna help. We can cut it. Well, it ain't gonna help that bucket, you know, but that's where we're at.
I think one thing that bothers me is every time we talk about the budget, the first thing we cut is what happens to the citizens. And then those are, those first three things right there are very, we have to have our policemen, our firemen and our public works. We cannot do without them.
Right.
But I know that in the-
Mr. Mayor, I want to be clear. Staff or no one has ever recommended reducing services. I've made it clear to you that as a growing city, there's more demands. I have never once recommended reducing services. I have responded to what is asked and you wanted a menu of things to consider. If it is your prerogative to cut, then you need to tell us. It's not gonna come from us. So I thank you for the comments. I want to add a few things. Past city councils, uh, and past staff have been very prudent with funds. That's shown that costs have essentially with inflation kept level. I, I, Nikki's a farm guy. So am I. Once upon a time, Saginaw was a rural community. That's a rural mindset. You just do what you have. I was joking with Nikki. My dad, I was probably 15, got a new tractor. That was not my tractor. I wasn't allowed to touch it. I had to deal with the old tractor that was broken, had no A C. We have done very, very well and will continue to do that. These are also, um, concerns that any city that's growing experiences. So every city council everywhere wants the lowest tax rate possible. You have, and past city councils have lowered our tax rate on the operating side. You, you have. I think every year I've been here, our operating tax rate has lowered. Now we're in a situation where the tax rate is going up because voters have said, yes, we want those projects. So that's where we are. Uh, I'll also say that you and I, all of us here have the benefit of knowing the conversation. We do a lot of damage talking about cutting positions for the average, everyday worker that doesn't have the benefit of being here at a council meeting and is out there at patrol or saving people's lives, the fire department. We're doing damage having this discussion.
You're the one that put it on there. We didn't.
You, Mayor Protam, asked for this to be on the agenda.
Yes, I did.
And I have given you items to consider to cut and not until a council majority says, do we want to cut those? Do we have a consensus? Council members don't make decisions. A council majority does. No individual council members.
We have to find a way to make the budget work.
If that's, you don't need to be talking to me, Mayor, uh, Mayor Protam. You need to talk to your peers on the council. It takes four people before we have a direction on any one item in the business of the city.
Okay. Val, do you have something else?
No.
Okay. Cindy?
I just want to chime in on this. You know, uh, when we passed the bond election, and I've said this before, nobody expected inflation to do what it's done. Gas prices has doubled. Groceries have doubled. Some have tripled. And, you know, even though seniors are getting an 8.7% raise, you know, when you only get a thousand dollars a month, that's not much money and these tax hurt them, especially since Medicare costs have gone up as well. We're not asking for anything permanent. We're asking for a little bit relief. And I think we owe our citizens that, but to try, you know, because they have to balance their budgets as well. Or they have to, they have to leave their homes and they may not have any place else to go. We've got, we have the difficult task of trying to balance everything, you know, and it, it's not fun. And it's not anything that we enjoy and we, it's, but it has to be done. We've got to help the citizens because they're the ones who make it possible for all of this to happen here.
So I've mentioned this, we mentioned this at our, our previous workshop when we kicked things off. I want to thank you all that we're having this discussion now so we don't get into the summer and, you know, we're, we're doing the hard work now. That's by design. We've done that every year. Kim and, Kim and I and staff, uh, since I've been here. We'll bring this up again, but to maintain our service level, to your point with inflation, it will cost more money to provide the same level of service. We have found that as an example, our mowing contract, the cost of mowing has gone up. We, uh, you approved tonight aquatic center repairs. This has all gone up. So until you tell us where you want to cut, which again, I sympathize with your position. It is not easy. Y'all want to make everyone happy. That's how you're elected as an elected official. We can't do it for you. You gotta tell us if it's your direction to cut. We need a majority to say, okay, here's our thoughts.
So here, here's-
Hold on. Uh, Mary was waiting, waiting her turn.
Um, two points. Number one, even though Gabe said he's glad here, we're having this discussion now. We really can't have an intelligent discussion about our budget for next year until we get quite a bit of data. Is that correct, Cam?
Well, I can't give you specifics on tax rate and tax rate estimates, but certainly these discussions regarding concepts and, and ideas and the direction, overall direction is definitely, um, something that we, we need and is, and earlier that we get it in the budget process, then we'll have our marching orders and what it is you expect. But as, as far as the specifics and tax rate calculations and all of that, it's, it's a little early for that.
And the other point is, I remember one of our prior city council members who had been on the city council for 27 years. So he had this information in his head. And in the early 1990s, the tax rate in Saginaw was 68 cents. It's 50 point something now. Yes. The reason for that was we didn't have hardly any businesses. You know, we didn't have enough homes to pay property taxes. You know, uh, we have lowered, since I've been on the city council, six years. Sometimes we lower the tax rate. Sometimes we have to raise it. They look at each year as a separate entity. We, the city of Saginaw, has done such a wonderful job historically of keeping a low rate. We are now being punished for the good work we have done in the past, keeping the tax rate low. We compare favorably to other cities in Tarrant County. So this mindset of no, we can never raise taxes, I believe is the wrong mindset to have. Do I want a high tax rate in Saginaw? Of course not. But do I want to be realistic about what we must do to keep our city running smoothly and to keep our staff satisfied and not wanting to leave? And of course I agree with you, Nick. I have never wanted to cut salaries for any staff. I want to raise salaries. So we, the normal, everyday citizen always wants a tax cut. Well, they don't have enough information to understand. We're already operating on a bare bones and very efficiently, very efficiently. So let's not punish ourselves for having done good work. And let's bite the bullet and realize there are times when a tax rate increase is necessary. We, as we've mentioned, we, we told the people there was gonna be a tax increase. So why are we now looking of ways to cut? That, I'm sorry, that's all I have to say.
All right. Paul, your end.
Yeah. It kind of goes along with what Nikki said. We've got a problem with costs of staffing. We're behind this, behind the eight ball with everything. I deal with a lot of other cities, especially in the emergency services. We're losing, we're potentially lose a lot of people. We need to come up with a plan as we enter the budget process of what do we need to do this year? What do we do, do next year? And going forward so that we can get caught up and be competitive. Cause it doesn't matter what size our city is. Fireman's gonna get paid wherever they go within the DFW metroplex. And that's, it's where we're at. I mean, we can't just keep sweeping this under the rug. We've got to fix it.
So I, I take, I take a little bit, I'll tell you, offense. She, here's the thing. The council has responsibility to make sure, you know, that, that we listen, like we listen to Kim and that we get the information, but make sure that, just like our own budget home, that, that we're spending it wisely. So I'm, I'm gonna pick on the fire, I'm not fire, the police department, okay? You guys did an excellent job. You provided us all of the information. I've read it and seen it. I know exactly what kind of shape, I know where y'all were spending your money. I know what they're spending, all of that. I can say right now, they're, I, it's good. Check it off, move on. We went over with the, uh, fire department. Um, I, I got that thing, what they did, this and some stuff. And we got the same thing. And I can tell you right now, we're short a resource. I can even tell you what that's costing the citizens in risk of that. We've got that. We understand it. We, we have done the uncomfortable, looking through it, saying, oh, okay, understand it. Yeah, we're great. Now, once I leave out of those two departments, I'm not as comfortable with being able to say that we went through that task of the other departments in the city to say, you know what? We are doing a damn good job with the money the citizens give us. I can't tell you the police department is. I can't tell you the fire department is because I've been giving that information. I'm a numbers guy. I go through numbers quick. I do this in my personal life. I'm, I'm a senior director of a Fortune 50 company. I have to go through this every year with my own company. So what they're asking for, nobody, none of us, I've never heard a council member once say, we're going to cut resources or we're going to drop this. I think that's a little unfair to come back on us with that. All we're asking for is, hey, show us how you're spending the money. And I think that's fair.
Sure. We're happy to bring that, but in August, the request was from the council, give me areas to cut. So we have essentially taken that. And again, not until a majority says, hey, we want to cut, are we gonna do it? I'm happy to bring that department by department. Um, I do think that one thing in its strategic, uh, project, the work plan project that y'all approved now, we do a poor job of letting our citizens know how good our, how well our staff does. I think we need to highlight, you know, our fire department, our police department, the extensive level of training. That costs money. We, the vast majority in our, uh, budget, as you saw, salary and benefits, is, is training for job-related certifications. And again, preliminarily, we're here in February. We have said, we're targeting, we can't promise it, a 5% cost of living adjustment for employees and, uh, probably step increases for public safety. Would like to thank the council for biting the bullet and making a hard decision in doing, um, uh, some step increases for the police department. I think you can't speculate in what ifs, but I think that probably was a good faith effort and gesture to employees that hopefully are not looking elsewhere. So I appreciate that. Happy to get you all the information.
The second thing is on these, the, the second stuff, y'all sent it to us. I've, I've got it right here. And it, it, I, I put two sets of data together. I put the citizens, how they rank these extracurricular activities we do, and then I ranked it on the cost. So I can tell you right now, our citizens, the number one thing for extracurricular activity we do is the Fourth of July. That was a number one ranking. I can tell you also what that costs us, you know, from the city, most, you know, with the staffing. I look in on who, that's, for, for that to be the number one, the citizen ranked that as the number one thing they like. And staffing costs us a little over 10,000, about 10,500, something like that. There's another 24,000 in donations. We don't have to count that because that's donations. So that's actually from what I can say, this costs to me $10,500 for the number one thing the citizens say they like. You know, so that, right, I can say, but that's probably not one I'm gonna be recommending to cut. But let's get down, you know, and you just start going through this list. And that's what we now have to do. We have to go through each one of these and say just the things, the same thing. We have to go through it. Is, are we spending the citizens' money for these extracurricular activities that they want? You know, the second one's a Christmas parade. That was number two. The staffing cost on that, for us to do that is 7,000, just a hair over $7,000. There's $23,000 of that that was donations. Okay? I also know that $20,000 of this came, I think it came out of the donations, but I think $20,000 of that was for the laser show, an eight-minute show, $20,000. Was that a good investment even though it was donations? Again, we gotta talk that and decide that. Maybe we do that again next year. Maybe we don't. Training grain is number three on the list. Uh, staffing, $42,000. City funds, $31,000. Uh, we had another $32,000 of donations for 106,000. So that's a big difference, number three for training grain. To me now, that's one I'm gonna be looking at. It's high dollar. It's a highest dollar one. 40 plus 30, you know?
Well, and one of the things about the training grain, one of the things about the training grain is that when it came down to the entertainment, by four o'clock in the afternoon, people are tired and they're going home. Maybe we need to forget the evening entertainment. Maybe we need to shorten- Maybe we need to shorten the hours of the training grain instead of getting rid of it altogether. Maybe we need to combine the training grain with the trunk or treat, which really didn't rate very high in the citizen appreciation survey or, you know. So, I mean, those are some things that we're looking at that could save a lot of money. And that's just a consideration.
Yeah, I agree. So this is one, training grains over $70,000 of, you're all's hard-earned money that we're spending on this. Now, the question we got to ask, do you all feel it's worth it? And, you know, that, these, this is the heartfelt questions we got to ask on these things. And just go through the list.
Well, there's also the Easter egg hunt. I mean, that didn't even rank very high. I mean, right below trunk or treat, which is close to the bottom of the list.
Yeah, Easter egg hunt was next to the last. It cost us $3,490, $9,000 donations. So, you know, the Easter egg hunt, all the kids run out there grabbing Easter eggs. Again, is this a beneficial thing?
It's over in 10 minutes.
It's also the lower one.
It's over in 10 minutes, and how long does it take staff to set this up?
Well, it takes staffing, it's 3,490.
For the Easter eggs?
So I think the fire department largely runs that on volunteer hours, is that correct? And donations?
But you'll still have staff that set that up and?
We do, we have staff. We've changed members so their time becomes more valuable, so we have to pay planners, to pay people to run that function like we do every other city function. But it is donated by the businesses and a lot of the feedback you won't receive from the kiddos that it really benefits. But there's, if you've not been there, there's a tremendous amount of kids. I would hate to see that go away. But again, back to the point, there's parts of consideration that have to be undertaken.
Yeah, true. The last one, this is an interesting one, the Run for the Rells 5K. Lowest one on our list, $2,762. And somebody was just talking about doing a second 5K.
We haven't done that in how many years?
We haven't done it in years.
Run the Rells was never a city event. That was a chamber of commerce event. I just ran it for them.
Okay. Well, we said we spent money on it. That's the data you all sent me.
It was the intention of the council asking us to bring that back. So we put it, it's going to cost a minimum of $20,000 to put it on, and that doesn't even count.
So this is the one that we were?
This was the last?
I don't know about another one. I know that the resident asked for a?
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about.
I have no idea. I'm not involved in that.
This was based on our last, our best guess estimate, based on the last time it was. And it was 2019, I think was the last one. And it's mostly overtime for police and fire where they barricade the roads. And then there's a little bit of comp time for the recreation people.
So what council's job is, is to look at each one of these, my job, all of our jobs, and say, are any of these, does anybody want to recommend to cut? Or maybe, like Cindy said, take a subcommittee or something and take a look at it and see how we can streamline her to make it better.
Well, if we compare the events against the city operations, you know, there's a lot more concern about our infrastructure, street maintenance. You know, they had 59 people that said that was the most important thing. Same thing with minimizing property taxes for city services. That was 42%. So those numbers still rank higher than what our, than most of what our events are, with the exception of the Fourth of July celebration. They still rate higher than training grain. You know, the people consider those far more important. So, yeah, I mean, those things need to be looked at carefully. And the things that don't rank high, what maybe we need to look at, maybe we, even those that do rank high, maybe revising a little bit.
Where's the trunk or treat on the list of what people like?
It's fourth from the, third from the bottom. And again, most of the people that come to that are not from Saginaw. And it's always congested. I just feel like it's not well, it's not very well organized because there's just so many people crammed together. It's not in a good location, and I don't?
Trunk or treat costs us $5,500.
And I think the risk is high compared to what that value is, especially since you have people crossing the streets and waiting in lines a long time. It's fun, no doubt about it. But maybe that needs to be combined with trunk or treat.
You mean training?
I mean, training grade, sorry. That's a bigger area. People are already there. And if we look at change in the hour, because when we had training grain last, or this last year, part of the problem is, is the school district had two other things going on at the same time that training grain was going on. You know, maybe we need to shift it to just like an afternoon, from noon to six or something like that, instead of 10 to seven o'clock. You know, shorten the hours. Again, we're not trying to get rid of anything, which was trying to operate smartly.
Right. So I will state this, it is council's job to look at the budget. And if any of us has something that they think ought to be cut or modified, we need to make the recommendation and do it.
We need to look at what's?
We've been talking about this a lot. Now it's time to, I forget, better like to put up or shut up. We got it here, let's look at, let's look at this, then we can look at the others. We get the data, we look at it, is it a recommendation? Let's put it on the table.
Essential versus beneficial.
I do have one request to speak. Brack, would you like them up on this item?
Brack Sinclair, 421 Creek Terrace. First of all, I would like to say that I'm gaining an appreciation for the decisions that y'all are having to make. And I know it's not an easy process. I would like to encourage you to, don't get too emotional about it, to make logical arguments. And those points are going to come across a lot better in front of your citizens. When you're too emotional about something, then people can get caught up in the emotion and there's a harsher reaction against that. So that would be my recommendation as an aside. But I would say that when you're talking about a, an event that costs $7,000 and you're discussing, spending time discussing whether or not that should be cut in some way, I think you're doing a disservice to what you're on the board for, what you're on council for. $7,000 is not going to put another police officer on the streets. It's not going to save a job. The decisions are higher than that, and the stakes are higher than that. So, and you were asking if the Christmas drone display was worth it? Absolutely it was, because the citizens loved it. And the cost is minimal.
But that also came from their donation in the water?
It came from the donation. So the citizens donated, they received value from it. I didn't see one negative comment anywhere about it. So it absolutely was worth it because the citizens said it was worth it. So that's just what I came up with to say.
Appreciate it.
Just, what's your next steps? I mean, this is like the multiple, X number of times that we kind of went around this. I've never seen any recommendations to, what do we do next, guys?
I have one question. Is there a way you can classify or list the essential workers that we just have to have to have?
Yeah, I mean, I think?
Against beneficial? Against those that are beneficial, essential versus beneficial?
I think we talked, core business is, is public health and safety. So I define that as public works and public safety. Everything else is somewhat discretionary. Now admin, we have to have accounting, we have to have customer service to take payments. You know, unfortunately, quality of life type services are not, they're never going to compete. So that would be my recommendation. To the point, if it's your desire, happy to bring, have each director talk about their budget. If there's interest, sounds like there's agreement that fire and police, everyone's confident with. I mean, we can look at public works next and be the largest. You tell me.
I was looking through all the years and all the added positions that we've put on. And I'm just wondering, how many, out of all those added, how many do we really have to have?
Can you give me specifics? Go ahead and tell me.
The main number that come up is, it's a little hard to read. Administrative assistant.
Take a picture, blow it up on your phone.
Management analyst, human resource analysis, all these information technicians.
So I would say? I would say as our, as our city grows, it requires more support services. So we added a position some time ago in HR. Melanie was a one, one-woman show. Management analyst position we added is in public works, directly serves public works.
Mandatory assistant, we don't have that position anymore.
Well, you have it on your thing here. That's all I'm going by. I just thought it was strange that they're not on the organizational chart and they're not. So I'm a little confused on the website here.
It sounds like we need a workshop or a day to sit down and discuss things back and forth.
I think we can bring a workshop by department at future council meetings, if that works. You can deep dive at each council meeting. That way, everybody has the benefit and we have the camera recorded and see what's heard and said. That'd be my recommendation. Sound fair?
Yeah, I mean, it would be nice because she read some of them and then I'm like, okay, well, I wonder what that, that role is. I don't know what that role is.
You know, an analyst and manager, two different things themselves. When you look at this world, so I'm kind of confused as to what do we really need all those because?
Sure, we can go through each department. Yeah.
And as I go through the?
And I'll apologize to the council if I was too forceful. I just want you to be very aware that there's a lot of fear and there's some damage done to staff that, again, don't have the benefit of knowing what's going on here. There's a lot of people.
They can watch.
It is directly from the city council. It is directly from the city.
What we're coming across is anti-employee. That's totally how this is coming across.
I shouldn't feel that way.
Well, that's how it is. We're totally coming across as anti-employee and that's why this is very dangerous to morale. We've already lost people, lost really good people because this council is so difficult to work with.
I disagree with that.
I disagree with that.
I can, I can name names of folks that left because they don't?
They're a rep, they're a chip.
They don't see how, how this council is going to be for the city and they don't see it supporting employees. I've heard people say that.
I mean, I've never heard anybody on council say that they don't support employees. I mean, it's almost like, and this is where I get, and I think everybody knows, I want to support employees. But us asking, hey, what are some of these roles? That's, again, for the citizens, that's our job and?
We were voted in to do that. And I've never heard anybody say anything about this city council not taking up for employees.
Randy, listen, you think your staff have concerns about support from council members? Because I've heard it without naming names. Doug Spears, you have concerns from your staff about support, raises and competitiveness?
I think there's a tremendous amount of attention paid to what goes on at the council meetings where that wasn't necessarily true before.
Keith Reinhardt? My entire department fears coming to work every day because they wonder if they're going to lose their job because we understand that we're non-essential services.
Because you're what?
Non-essential services.
Y'all are essential.
We're not police, fire, and public works.
But you're still essential services.
We think we are.
We think you are.
Our phone is blowing up right now. We're asking, are we not important?
You are important.
No.
No.
When you're saying police and fire, public works?
No, 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 no. Wait, wait, wait. You misunderstand me.
No, they're listening to what we're saying.
We have to have fires, police, public works, inspections, all those departments.
That's the first conversation.
We have to have that.
You guys need to know, this does affect people.
No, I think what Nick said?
Departments that we really have to have, ever, ever.
Never get rid of departments.
It's very disappointing for me to hear this right now.
Y'all got to be?
To be honest, you know I have with it, I don't care. But it's hard to listen to people that are going through all this training. I hope you young people do training. I tell them they're important, and all of a sudden they think, we're not important.
I didn't say none of them, I didn't say anybody was important. I just wanted to know about all these new added positions, if they're the essential. I'm not saying to get rid of them. I don't know what they do.
If you don't know what they do, in my staff, then there's a problem.
I know what your staff does.
Well, we need to address this. I think this is the wrong way to do it. We're going to do the wrong?
This is the criteria that we were dictated that we had to follow. I actually had a meeting with our lawyer and they said this had to be in a public forum. It had to be done this way, okay? So let's, let's, the rest of it. It isn't as if the council wants to throw this out here and air this in non-public. We're bound by state law to do it this way.
I don't think it's fair for us to ever do this.
Right. Yeah.
Our voices are heard. We have a big platform and our voices are heard, so be careful what you say. This is very, this is very damaging to morale, period. You got to understand that. And I want, you just don't understand how much damage we have done tonight so far and in the past to morale. We're having trouble keeping people, period. I'm sorry.
Well, what is it? Is it council or is it the lack of pace?
And how are we going to recruit people that we need vacancies for because they're hearing this?
I understand that. I know we have to recruit people. I understand that our employees need to get up to where they need to be salary rise. But what I'm saying is we can't just keep adding stuff to it and get to that point. The money has to come from somewhere. And so, but every time that we say anything about not having enough money for a car buyer, an inspector, whatever, because every department is short of employees, every time we say something, they want to cut city, I say, they want to cut city services. That's the first thing that gets reduced. And then they say it really doesn't do that much for the employee side or the payroll side of the budget. You got to have the money somewhere. Our employees are very good at what they do, most of them. I don't know, but the ones that I know of and I've seen them in public, they deserve everything that they, they need to get. Y'all do deserve more, but we can't give it to you if we don't have the money.
Well, yeah, so we did two things today. We, I'm sorry, I have to disagree with the mayor. We have publicly stated, and we have multiple times, that we want, and we know we can't raise it, get it, get the employees right in one year. We've asked more than once for a multi-year plan to get us there, okay? We've done said that. We'll support it, okay? Now, on that, like we said, we got to pay for it, just like we do our personal. Now, part of that is looking at, one of the, there's just a couple knobs we can turn. There's one over here, raise taxes. We're not against raising taxes. We just got to go through this other to make sure so that we can go back to the citizens and say that we've done the job that we're supposed to. Now, if that upsets people, they say, oh, I dare you to even look at my stuff, then I don't know anything other to say than, okay, because I have to do it. Nobody has said anywhere is where we're going to cut any employees. All we're saying is, well, show us, show us what they're doing. At a, to me, at a 10,000-foot view. I mean, I gave two fine examples of two departments that has done that and it's like, so, good to go.
I highly encourage you to come to the local business forum this coming Thursday. We're going to talk about economic development. And one of the things that you'll learn at that economic development event is over the last three months, when we get our sales tax revenues from October, November, December of 2022, there's almost $200,000 more than what we were at the same time last year.
And that's wonderful.
Well, then, if that's?
That's essential services.
It is.
I didn't say anybody was not essential. I just wanted to know kind of the order that we did it.
Yeah, and I?
That's additional revenue coming in.
So let me?
It's paid by residents, it's paid by anybody who shops and buys goods and services in the city.
Let me ask, if we're good with fire and police, it sounds like everyone is, is it okay if we talk about public works, our next largest department, maybe next council meeting?
Absolutely.
We can go through staff, we can go through vacancies, whatever you'd like.
We still need, fires don't, we're not done with fire. We need to have staffs and everything else.
I think fire has specific concerns that need to be addressed. I would agree with that.
Yeah, right. The multi-year plan to get them on?
Sure, yeah. So fire, public works, we'll go on down the list.
Yeah, I think we've got a good resolution. We've got a? Yeah. I think we've, we've got a good resolution. We've got a plan. I don't wanna belabor this too much more. Did you have something else, Cindy, real quick?
I, I wanna say something, you know, and Keith, this is, uh, speaks to what your leadership is. You know, the aquatic center, our revenue last year was $138,000. Our expenditures were $215,621. And Kim, correct me if I'm wrong, I can, I can honestly believe that we have never had to spend that kind of money on the aquatic center.
My, 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 uh, phones like they have, we were told to open it up no matter what. We had significant-
Right.
Expenses that they haven't had to pay every year.
And this is true. And if we hadn't, it was a spend-
They had their phones for the last few years prior to that.
And, and, you know, when I've heard, uh, what we've lost over the years prior to that, then, you know, I think what we lost last year is less than what we've lost in the years past. So coming in at $138,000, I think we've done extremely well.
Last year was the most we've ever, well, I won't say, in the last five years was more, but that was because the direction was get it open. We got it open. We had, we had to pay more for staffing. Um, so, um, Melanie and, and the rec center people are working on staffing plan this year. We've got more time. They're gonna plan it out. So hopefully that loss won't happen like that.
So my, my additional point is I'd like to point out is, is to keep up with the times, as a councilman, you just, you decided to raise the, the rates or the pay for staff. That makes that expenditure go up. We, we paid a fraction of what we, what they were getting paid prior to that. They were getting paid nothing prior to that.
But another service-
Which we appreciate that, but that, that increases the cost.
And I understand that. Another service that you guys offer is the summer camp. Your expenses were below your rep, uh, below your revenue, so there was a little bit of profit there. Same thing with the senior citizen center. You guys lost space because you've taken on the senior citizens. Uh, the fact that you're able to do what you do with what you've been handed is absolutely remarkable. You know, you and your staff are deeply underappreciated for what y'all do. Uh, the programs that were offered at the aquatic center last summer, I heard nothing but good things for that and they hope we have them again this summer. Um, you know, and, and you heard the council here at the end of the, uh, at the end of the summer period. We wanna continue those programs, but, uh, you know, we can't do everything. We've got to, we have to make some choices.
We'd like to also, but we're at a critical point because at some point we gotta start planning for the summer. If that's gonna be cut, we need to know now.
Right. But, uh, and I don't think, I think the aquatic center is one of the more popular places that we have that serves all the citizens.
Yes, Mary. Go ahead.
So there's a lot of discussion that has to happen.
I believe that these city services like aquatic center and camps, et cetera, are not intended to be money-making.
Parking recs, departments everywhere in the United States are not set up to make money. They're not, we're not in this business to make money. We hope to break even, but they don't make money. Unless you charge a significant amount of money and you have the facility to back it up like an NRH 200, can you charge a lot more money? Because we can keep going up in our prices in the, in the aquatic center. If, if that's what y'all wanna do, we don't know that, but you're gonna run everybody off because they can go just down the street and pay at a bigger facility for the same price.
These are quality of life enhancements to our citizens. They appreciate that. Now, they don't always, aren't always able to connect, oh, we like these things. Guess what? We have to pay for them. So that's, that's the difficult part. And I think most of our residents have an appreciation for what we offer them and they are willing to pay for those services via a very small tax hike, which we have already told them we were going to do based on the bond election. They voted for those knowing that, so I don't understand why we're trying to cut money from the-
All right, let, let's keep going. I, I think we're about done with this conversation with the, we've got a plan forward. Let's move that and let's go.
Well, I'd like to make another recommendation if I could, real quick.
Quickly.
You know, one of the things we talked about was the food truck park expansion. And that was what, $365,000?
Yeah, that's part of the parks bond that the Parks Board recommended. It's debt already in the process of being issued on the INS debt.
Is that something else that, is there something else that we could do with that parks money? Maybe apply it to the aquatic center or something?
Uh-
Something more beneficial?
I think process-wise, the best thing would be to have that come from the Parks Board to discuss that, repairs.
You know, that's, just look at this stuff. I mean, from all directions. Not trying to downgrade anybody or anything.
Sure.
Just have to look at it from every direction because like Nick said several times, this is our job. That's why we were elected.
Oh, absolutely. But let's keep clear, the bond is the debt, the voters approve side. We're the concern tonight and the focus is on the operations.
Uh, okay.
Yeah, that wouldn't help us get, that wouldn't help us there.
It's not gonna, yeah.
Okay. All right. So let's close out item number, that is 16. Going back to item number nine? Can we re-table that, un-table it? I don't know how you call that. I need to, it's gone, so I'm gonna say we're gonna go back to number nine. Is everybody okay with that? We had this discussion. So item number nine is considered tax regarding agreements between city side and community link, community link mission for the operation and promotion of the farmer's market at Saginaw, Wichita. Whitney's gone. We heard Whitney's presentation earlier. One thing we did mention, and Kim corrected me, was that, that is paid for out of the hotel operations tax, right? Hotel motel tax, whatever you call that?
Correct. That has no impact on the tax rate whatsoever.
And, and so there's only a certain few number of things that can be spent on, right? Will you remind me what that can be spent on?
Um, we use some of it for promotion of the arts and promotion of the city, basically, advertising.
We use some of that for train and grain as well, right?
That's right.
Okay.
Advertising for train and grain and promotion of the arts, it usually pays for the entertainment. There are other items that it can be paid for, and I don't know off the top of my head the list, but you can pay for like convention centers and, and things like that. There is an interesting thing that's, that's proposed in the legislature this year and that you could pay for roads and infrastructure within a mile of a hotel. So that would be nice if that passed.
Okay. All right. So that's, that's a good, good thing to know about the financing. I didn't think about that earlier, so thank you for reminding us, Kim. All right. Any other questions, discussions on item number nine? Questions, comments, council?
Well, I'm, I guess I'm a little confused, so ju, just so that I'm straight here. So, guys, it's just pure hypothetical. If we, this would not have an impact, whether we approved it or didn't approve it for what, what we're looking for, the-
It does not impact the tax rate. It has a special funding source which is restricted hotel occupancy tax.
Cool.
Correct.
Are there any major changes between last year's contract and this one?
It went down one, it went down a little bit.
They took the link work off.
Yeah, but they're charging let-
They don't, they don't make work anymore.
They're-
Yeah, we still didn't like work. We took it off.
Yeah. So it's, it's what, a thousand dollars less than last year, something like that?
Yeah, that's what I saw.
I believe a thousand dollars less.
Rough. Okay. Other questions, council?
And just back the safety issues, you know, with the water and stuff like that.
Oh, yeah.
It's a concern.
Whitney always said, absolutely. Can be a part. All right, I'll entertain a motion. Paul?
I make a motion. We approved the, uh, action regarding the community link, uh, operations and promotions for the farmer's market.
Second. Nick, second? Please cast your votes.
Hmm. It went.
Motion rises. Thank y'all. Thanks for waiting, folks. All right. Fortunately, we do not have an executive session. Thank goodness. So item 18, I'll entertain a motion adjourned.
I'll second it. I'll make the motion. I thought you said you made the motion.
You second? All right. All in favor, raise your hand. At, uh, 9:19, we're out of here.
Thank y'all. Thank you for taking our votes.